All right, I'd like to call this Tampa City Council meeting to order. We have a special guest with us today to give the invocation. She should be on the line, Missy Martin with McFarland Park. A Tampa native, born and raised. Her family goes back many, many generations. She's been involved in the community for many, many years and always stays on top of the issues. No stranger to Tampa City Council and Tampa City Hall. We welcome her today to give the invocation. Missy, if you're on the line, if you'd like to go ahead and give the invocation.
Thank you, Councilwoman Meniscalco, and thank you to all of you for having me here today. It's an honor to deliver this morning's invocation. Dear Heavenly Father, we ask that you cast your blessings on the people who have been elected to lead our community in the city of Tampa. We ask that you guide them. Because we all forget from time to time, especially in the noise of what passes for political debate today, we ask that you remind us that we are not only leaders, but also servants, and that it is our responsibility and yours to serve the common good of all. Grant them and us the wisdom, courage, and patience to know and do what is right and good. May we always be guided by the spirit of community and not by individual gains or political wins. We ask that you continue to carry us through these often chaotic and uncertain times and that you show us what it means to come together as one for the greater good and to find a common ground, even if it means not winning. We also ask that you remind us that joy still exists and that these uncertain times will pass if we remember to love, respect, and hold each other up. Some in our community are hurting more than usual right now. We ask that you keep them in your favor and that you help us live and lead by example so that we can help lift those who need lifting and provide them the tools and skills to help themselves. In this, we pray in the name of all that we hold sacred and all that we hold good and true. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. We will go to the Pledge of Allegiance. If you're able to, please stand forth for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. We'll have roll call. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 Carlson.
Here.
Dean Felder.
Here.
Etrow.
Here.
Miranda.
Here.
Meniscalco.
Here.
All right. With us today is Mayor Jane Castro with the budget presentation. If you'd like to, go ahead.
All right. Good morning, Council. It is so exciting and so wonderful to be standing before you this morning to present our proposed FY 2021 budget, a budget that is thoughtful, balanced, and I feel will serve our community very, very well. I want to begin this morning by saying thank you to each and every one of you for your service to our community and also thank you for your partnership and all that you've accomplished over the last year. Now, clearly, we have seen some obstacles, unforeseen and unprecedented in the last year, but we have still been able to accomplish a great deal. I want to let you know that this presentation is going to be somewhat of a hybrid in that we're going to look back to some of the accomplishments and challenges that have brought us here today, but we're also clearly going to be looking into the future. So again, thank you to each and every one of you. Thank you to the team that has crafted this balanced budget. I hope that you find it as meaningful as I do. And I just want to say thank you to each and every one of you, and I am looking forward to transforming Tampa's tomorrow.
Thank you very much, Mayor. And I think we're going to a video now.
Just over a year ago, we set forth the budget for fiscal year 2020, and we had no idea what lay ahead. COVID-19 has created unprecedented challenges, impacting our economy and calling on our community to grow stronger together even while we're apart. Times like this remind us why it's critical that as a city, we practice good financial stewardship. Our taxpayers need to know that they can count on us to provide essential services, especially during a crisis. Over the past few months, not only have we kept our city running, but we also lent a helping hand to those in need through programs like One Tampa and Lift Up Local. In good times and bad, our community has shown one-of-a-kind resilience. We've celebrated together. We've overcome obstacles together. We thanked our heroes and helped our neighbors. This past year, we also made major strides towards transforming Tampa's tomorrow, and this is just the beginning. From new community traditions like Boom by the Bay and New Yar's Eve to getting down to work fixing our roads, renewing our pipes, and shining a light on every corner of our city. We worked hard. We played hard, and we grew stronger together. Even now, as we continue to face COVID-19, I have never been more hopeful for our city's future. Because if there's one thing I know to be true, it's that Tampa has grit. We still have roads to pave, big dreams to fulfill, and unforgettable memories to make together, and we are not slowing down. I believe Tampa's rich narrative is only as compelling and relevant as the collection of individual narratives that comprise our diverse community. To this end, a series of advisory teams were developed consisting of subject matter experts and many interested and knowledgeable individuals. Through the Community Heroes Program, City of Tampa employees can receive up to $5,000 in down payment assistance. Most businesses are the backbone of the city of Tampa. This budget reflects the optimism and hope that I have for the city of Tampa's future. This is the time to write our next chapter by transforming Tampa's tomorrow. We have to work together to ensure there are sufficient housing options for all Tampanians to afford. City employees will be paid $15 an hour. Today, we are releasing the findings and recommendations from our transportation advisory team. Carry up the arts and safety with our crosswalks to classrooms program. Ensure that we didn't have any more bees thrown out into the bay. All departments are coming together to create a safer environment for all. Housing affordability is a community-wide issue that will require a community-wide effort. We are as prepared as possible to deal with this disease if and when it arrives in our community. Our collaborative approach to these incidents makes us stronger and more resilient when it comes to responding to any incidents. We must take the approach of not if, but when. One Tampa Relief Now Rise Together is a COVID-19 relief plan that will provide critical support. We want to lift up our local businesses and help them reopen responsibly. To help minimize the spread, I issued a face covering mandate in the city of Tampa requiring individuals to wear face coverings. Code enforcement and Parks and Rec teams distribute over 400,000 face coverings to our community. It's up to us to change it. It's up to us to make those changes.
The Citizens Review Board is now called to order.
As we look forward to FY 2021, I know that we can continue moving full steam ahead, laser focused on achieving our goals and fulfilling our vision to build the city we all want to live, work, and play in. Our community is bigger than any obstacle, and together, we are unstoppable. Let's continue transforming Tampa's tomorrow to create a brighter future for generations to come. This is the greatest city in the world, and together, we will lead Tampa into our next chapter. When we took office a mere 15 months ago, none of us could have imagined that we would be holding this meeting virtually instead of at Old City Hall. This past year, our city has had to overcome unexpected challenges due to COVID-19. But as you just saw, we've also achieved so much together despite every obstacle, and this is just the beginning. Fighting COVID and protecting the health, safety, and lives of our community has dramatically changed not only the issues that we face as a city today and how we tackle them, but it has given new urgency to dealing with the greatest challenges that we have encountered for years. I know that the past few months haven't been easy for many in our community, but that's why this budget is so valuable. This is an opportunity for us to invest back in our community through quality services that will lift up every neighborhood to ensure that we can come out of this crisis stronger than ever before. Despite the challenges of recent months, I am optimistic and hopeful for our city's future as I was when I gave this presentation last year because Tampa is resilient. Prior to COVID-19, we started working with a group of internationally renowned resilience experts from the Resilient City Catalyst, a spin-off of the Rockefeller Foundation, to develop a resilience roadmap for the city of Tampa. Our goal was to prepare for shocks and stresses that disrupt any community from reaching its full potential. That ongoing effort is now more important than ever, and in the coming weeks, everyone in Tampa will be invited to contribute to that roadmap. A core part of building resilience is community spirit. When faced with hardships, we lean on each other and lift up our community together. But it's also due to our commitment to strong financial responsibility and planning ahead. Times like these remind us why it's critical that as a city, we practice good financial stewardship. Our taxpayers need to know that they can count on us to provide essential services, especially during a crisis, and this has been a true display of just that. When we began the process to develop the FY 2021 budget in February, we started with a budget that was balanced with a little over $1.2 million being returned to reserves. As I begin my discussion of the impacts of COVID-19, I want to make it clear that direct federal assistance to cover revenue loss is critical to Tampa and to all cities. The CARES Act provided significant support to the county, airport, heart, and our schools, but only one city in Florida qualified for funding based on its population of over 500,000 residents. While Congress intended for city funding to come through states and counties, it's clear that direct aid from the federal government is the only way to ensure that we have the support we need to recover from COVID. When faced with a revenue loss of nearly $24 million due to COVID-19, we worked together to restructure our existing debt to address this shortfall, and for that, I thank you. As a result of our responsible budgeting philosophy and the actions we've taken, we have mitigated to the best of our ability the impacts of COVID-19 on the FY 2021 budget. For example, we faced and are still facing decreases in many of our main revenues, including sales taxes, electric franchise fees, electric utility taxes, and business taxes. So to develop a balanced budget in 2021, we scrubbed our numbers to reduce expenditures, proposing more than $12 million in reductions. Despite the setbacks of COVID-19, I am so proud of all the great things our city has accomplished. When kids had no place else to go this summer, Tampa Parks and Rec adapted summer camps to increase safety measures and offer a safe place for our youth to learn and play. It also provided much-needed relief for parents and guardians and enabled many of them to rejoin the workforce. When COVID-19 caused many of our local businesses to shut down, we launched One Tampa to lift them back up. And once they began reopening responsibly, we introduced the Lift Up Local program, enabling restaurants and retail shops to easily expand into outdoor space to offset their capacity limits and give them more space to serve customers safely. Our hard-working team has always stepped up across all departments to serve our community. And that leads me to my next topic, which concerns a city department that all of you know is very close to my heart, having spent more than 30 years serving alongside them. I have no doubt that our police department is the best in the United States. I can say this based on three specific value-based reasons. First is that over the past 17 years, we have worked hard to forge police-community trust, which shows itself in the over 1 million calls for service in and out of our 911 Public Safety Center. This collaborative partnership with our community and the police department is the reason that Tampa has lowered the crime rate by 80% as of the last year and is over 50% lower than the average of the other major cities in Florida. By making Tampa safer, officers have helped pave the way for our city's economic success and improve the quality of life for Tampa residents. Second, as the population in Tampa has increased, crime has dramatically decreased. Officers have worked with community members to make this one of the safest cities in the nation. In addition, the deployment of officers has been strategically balanced over the years to give the same high level of service to each neighborhood and align the officer-to-citizen ratio. We are not going to defund the police. I'm not saying this out of pride or arrogance because we still have more work to do. I'm saying it because of the value of this high level of service that is virtually unmatched for similar cities. We will focus on investing, not divesting, to increase training for police and all city departments. We will invest in providing quality-of-life services that are key to transforming Tampa's tomorrow. Our citywide strategy will focus on lifting up neighborhoods with improved housing, mobility, infrastructure, and workforce. This will improve service, strengthen our communities, and reduce the over-reliance on our police, who are already asked and tasked to do too much. As we grow as a community, our hope is that we have fewer car crashes, overdoses, domestic disputes, less runaways and missing person searches, high-risk mental illness calls, and homeless outreach, all of which happen around the clock and in every neighborhood. Our highest priority calls are typically dispatched within 94 seconds, and officers are on the scene within minutes. Based on lean operating costs with officers assigned evenly throughout the city, a reduction in the number of police officers could impact any neighborhood at any hour of the day and place this high level of service in tremendous jeopardy. In order to build that brighter future for all, we recognize that social action and arts have value. The city provides more than 1 million The city provides more than one million dollars per year to about two dozen smaller nonprofits, which are largely committed to improving quality of life in the social arts sectors of our community. While this is a good thing to do, especially now when so many are so financially challenged, in the coming year, we will introduce a new level of strategic accountability to accomplish two goals. First, we are committed to exercising financial responsibility for every single taxpayer dollar and must ensure that we achieve appropriate outputs and outcomes from these organizations, while also encouraging the use of other fund sources such as grants. Second, by increasing accountability for all fund recipients, the city can seek to support additional nonprofit organizations. For fiscal year twenty twenty one, we are proposing to maintain the commitments made to these organizations in the prior year. However, moving forward, we will monitor performance, and quarterly funding will be dependent on each organization achieving its objectives and outcomes. Despite the financial impact of COVID nineteen, our city has remained steadfast in its commitment to strong fiscal stewardship. Last year, we presented the first budget starting in the black since the Great Recession, and this year, we received a triple-A bond rating for the city's water and wastewater systems from Moody's, S&amp;P, and Fitch. Our fiscal responsibility has positioned us to better face the challenges ahead, none of which we could have predicted. Our stable financial outlook reflected by these strong ratings are the result of a decade of hard work and ingenuity, which we will continue to maintain every year. As part of our strategic core, we strive to responsibly manage the city's financial resources by keeping expenses in line with recurring revenues and maintaining high credit ratings to ensure low borrowing costs. The city will also maintain strong reserves and fund balances for unforeseen needs and emergencies, something we are all too familiar with in recent months. We also want to continue planning ahead and preparing for the city's financial future by adjusting rates, fees, and charges necessary to reflect the cost of services and inflation. We will develop and maintain long-range forecast models to ensure we are budgeting effectively for our growing city as we work to transform Tampa's tomorrow. To achieve our vision, we will also collaborate with regional agencies and external partners, as well as the private sector, to finance major projects and ensure a financially sustainable Tampa. Our city is on the rise, and as we keep growing, we need to ensure we're building a stronger city from the ground up, and that includes investing in our city infrastructure. The city will leverage investments in technology to move toward a more sustainable workforce that is safe and secure, and we will prepare sound maintenance and replacement programs for city equipment and assets, including buildings and vehicles. With this strategic core approach, I know that we can align our budgetary needs to meet our mission of delivering outstanding city services that enhance the quality of life within our community. The FY twenty twenty one budget is nearly one point three billion dollars, which is two hundred and twelve million more than last year's budget. It provides funding for essential governmental services. However, we've also been able to include funds to start addressing several key requests from the community and from city council. First is Fair Oaks Park, where we will start the process of programming and designing what the community wants at that park. We are committed to provide sufficient funds towards redeveloping this park to a cultural and athletic destination for East Tampa residents, young and young at heart. Second is Rivercrest Park, where we will replace and reinforce the seawall, construct boardwalks, and a dock, and build sidewalks. In New Tampa, we will invest in developing an inclusive playground so that all of our community can take part in these amenities. And we will provide twelve additional staff for Rescue Sixteen, which will provide service to East Tampa, and for Rescue Twenty Four, which will be assigned to Station Thirteen. This funding will also include a new rescue squad. We will also invest in preserving and honoring our city's history. We will provide a hundred and fifty thousand to assist in saving the Jackson House and fifty thousand dollars for a Zion Cemetery memorial. We will also invest in our city's future by developing a climate, action, and equity plan focused on climate preparedness, energy efficiency, and environmental protection for all of our neighborhoods. It's also important that we enhance our employees' training, which is why we are setting aside funding for bias training for all city employees. And finally, the city has allocated one million dollars to secure fire rescue self-contained breathing apparatus, better known to civilians as air tanks, and we hope to match that in September with grant funding. Other items to note about this budget, this is the eighth consecutive year that the city's property tax values have increased. This is advantageous to our residents and also helps to offset negative impacts we are experiencing to other revenue sources. This fiscal year, we will see PBA and IAFF members depart the city's healthcare program for their own healthcare trust. The city will continue our progressive healthcare program, which has resulted in reducing the percentage of claims filed compared to national averages. And to continue these trends, we are exploring launching a third care ATC clinic for city staff. The city's two pension programs are very well-funded. The general employee's pension program is eighty-eight point three percent funded, and the fire and police pension is ninety-four point five percent funded. The city's long-term fiscally responsible budgeting practices resulted in thirteen consecutive credit rating increases during the last administration. In maintaining that impressive track record, I am proud to announce that we achieved our first rating increase when Moody's recently awarded a triple-A rating on our water and wastewater bonds. And the city is now one of only two localities in Florida which has a triple-A rating from all three providers. Let me say that one more time. And the city is now one of only two localities in Florida which has a triple-A rating from all three providers. We could not have achieved this without the commitment of two mayors and two city councils who had the vision and understanding that both the water and wastewater departments needed funds to fix and maintain our infrastructure. Our aim remains focused. We want to create a brighter future for all who live, work, and play in Tampa, shaping a stronger, more resilient city that can rise above the challenges and overcome any obstacle, a city that can keep up with its strategic growth, not stand in its way, where no neighborhood is left behind and where everyone has a seat at the table. We know that many in our city are struggling across the community, and we want to work together to ensure we are lifting up local while reopening responsibly. To achieve our vision, we have identified five strategic goals that will guide us forward as we tackle the issues facing our city and transform Tampa's tomorrow for generations to come. The five strategic goals include: strengthening community-centric services, enhancing workforce development, increasing housing affordability, improving infrastructure and mobility, establishing sustainability and resilience. The first prong of our strategic plan involves strengthening community services. Our primary function as local government is to meet the needs of our community, which is why this strategic goal is central to everything we do across departments. We strive to provide customer-centric quality services that make it easy for our community to interact with the city and to get the services they need. To enhance community-centric quality services, we plan to hire a community experience director that will help everyone navigate community services and experiences. We also want to ensure our customer experience is meeting the needs of everyone in our community by investing in software that will help us track and monitor the level of service we provide to residents and create an online platform to streamline access to city services. Lastly, we want to ensure we're reaching every neighborhood by strengthening our ability to connect city hall to Tampa residents. To do so, we will enhance the work done by our neighborhood coordinators to facilitate communication and collaboration with community partners and neighborhood leaders to uplift and nurture communities across our city. Our second strategic goal is to enhance workforce development. Tampa's workforce is the backbone of our economy. It's what employs our family members, friends, and neighbors. It's what drives our city forward toward a brighter future. Now more than ever, we need to invest in our workforce to ensure our economy can bounce back from COVID nineteen and our residents can continue working hard and dreaming big. It's my goal to build a city where hard work pays off and the middle class is within reach regardless of your zip code, where students can see a clear path toward a brighter future, and where anyone who sets their mind to it can enhance their skills through education and training. And once they have that diploma in hand or certification under the belt, a good-paying job is waiting for them on the other side. To achieve this vision, we have to ensure job seekers have access to the resources necessary to succeed, and we need to connect employers with skilled workers. The first step is formulating a workforce-community collaborative by working with partners like Career Source and establishing a mayor's workforce council. This council will help manage our talent pipeline by enhancing our workforce programs, working with some of the city's largest employers, and finding solutions to break down some of the existing barriers to employment. Next, we will also work with community partners to support and enhance a pathways-to-profession model that informs residents of career opportunities, training options, and community resources in Tampa's high-growth employment sectors. Lastly, to enhance workforce development, we will align educational resources to meet the needs of job seekers in our community. We want to uplift our youth and job seekers of all ages by empowering them to explore post-secondary education or skills training so that they can continue on a path toward a prosperous future. Tampa is a fast-growing city. Our skyline is rapidly changing, and more people are moving here every day. According to the latest census, Tampa is the third most populous city in Florida. And it's not hard to see why, with our beautiful weather, our vibrant neighborhoods, and our entrepreneurial spirit, who wouldn't want to plant their roots and watch them grow in our city? But population growth can often result in unintended challenges, such as limited supply and high demand for housing and rising housing costs. Which brings us to our next strategic goal, increasing housing affordability. As a lifelong Tampa resident, I believe everyone should have the chance to live in a place they're proud to call home, and they shouldn't have to worry whether they can continue to afford the roof over their heads. If we want to avoid the pitfalls of other cities where it's nearly impossible to afford a one-bedroom apartment, much less own a home, we have to act now. And we have to work together to ensure there are sufficient housing options for Tampanians at all income levels. As our population grows, we need to balance the scales between housing supply and demand. To accomplish this, we will work with our community partners to add an additional ten thousand housing units by the end of twenty twenty seven. Establishing this ambitious goal reinforces our mission to be accountable for driving tangible outputs. It also requires us to work creatively across many stakeholders to achieve life-changing results. In addition to developing new housing units, the city will also prioritize the maintenance and repair of existing affordable units. Another way we plan to increase and sustain housing affordability is by initiating the One Tampa Community Land Trust. This land trust will be a new tool for the city to achieve a sustainable solution to housing affordability while preserving the character of our unique neighborhoods. These past months, our One Tampa program was incredibly successful in helping uplift residents during the early stay-at-home period of COVID nineteen by activating quickly to help pay rent, mortgage, and essential utility bills. Now we will expand upon that uplifting mission by helping to develop One Tampa as a nonprofit five oh one C three organization to be the foundation under which the land trust will be governed. The One Tampa Community Land Trust will enable us to more effectively manage, acquire, and distribute buildings and homes to meet the long-term housing needs of our community. For many, owning a home is a part of their American dream. It's a way for them to plant their roots and watch them grow. We want to increase opportunities for generational wealth by providing a realistic and attainable path to homeownership through a wide range of programs, workshops, and services. By investing in these programs, we can make the dream of homeownership attainable for countless Tampanians who live, work, and play in our great city. These past few months, COVID nineteen has underscored the fact that housing and shelter are some of our most basic needs. But while many of us were hunkering down at home with loved ones during the safer-at-home order, others in our community had no place to go. The need for homeless services has been undeniable during COVID nineteen, and we were grateful to work with Catholic charities and other community partners to establish Hillsborough Hope, a temporary homeless shelter for those with nowhere else to go. The shelter provided lifesaving resources to countless homeless individuals in our community. In fact, one individual who was staying at Hillsborough Hope was hired by Ashley Furniture, one of the partners that supplied mattresses for this incredible initiative. But while this project made a difference, the reality is that homelessness will not go away with this pandemic. We are still facing a scarcity of resources and overcrowding in many of our local shelters. To help lift up the most vulnerable members of our community, the city will work with Hillsborough County and nonprofit partners to establish multiple shelter solutions. We will begin with short-term shelters with wraparound services as a pathway to permanent housing. Our goal is to identify long-term solutions to homelessness and to eliminate housing insecurity in our community. To achieve all of these critical housing and shelter goals, we've created a new leadership role responsible for managing and growing the city's community housing initiatives and the dozens of programs and millions of dollars of support that flow through the city. Our next strategic goal has to do with something I've been passionate about since day one, and that's improving our infrastructure and mobility. It's no secret that transportation is our Achilles' heel. I often say we're so far behind, we think we're first. As our city continues to grow, we need transit that can keep up, because world-class cities deserve world-class transportation. To keep our city moving forward towards a brighter future, we have to address our growing transportation needs. In FY twenty twenty one, we intend to substantially complete the Tampa Move Citywide Mobility Plan. This plan will serve as a roadmap that will identify all new transportation projects over the next twenty-five years. Projects will focus on improving safety, increasing economic opportunities, promoting sustainability and resilience, making equitable investments across the entire city, and addressing all modes of transportation, especially walking, biking, and high-quality transit services. This plan will be developed using a grassroots process and a listen-first approach to resident input, because we want a transportation system that works for everyone in our community. To build a better, connected city, we also need to create premium transit corridors along major transportation spines in our community. This will allow us to bridge the gap between major economic hubs, including West Shore to Downtown and Downtown to the University Area Innovative District. In terms of the Downtown to University corridor, one opportunity would be to extend and modernize the Tampa Streetcar. The city will submit and advocate for state and federal grant applications for construction of the Streetcar Modernization and Extension Project and commence the engineering design phase. Along this same corridor, HART will complete the ongoing Bus Rapid Transit Study and begin design for the BRT project. The city is also working with HART to complete a transit-oriented development study that will guide land use surrounding this corridor. As our city continues to grow and more people travel on our streets, we also need to think about what's underneath our roadways. Healthy infrastructure is the foundation of a strong city, and it's time we start taking that seriously. Last year, we made history together by passing PIPES, the largest water and wastewater infrastructure plan in our city's history. PIPES is allowing us to finally replace our aging infrastructure after nearly 100 years of use. This will help minimize traffic interruptions due to water main breaks and allow us to take a big step forward towards a more sustainable and resilient future. In FY 2021, we will continue to implement PIPES and make progress for transforming Tampa's tomorrow. And speaking of sustainability, we also want to support green mobility solutions. When we think about transit, we automatically think about cars and buses. But there are so many other ways to get around. By integrating our existing trails and greenways into our transportation network, we can provide a safe and convenient alternative to driving a car. Greenways and trails organically link our community, and I believe that in Florida, we should take advantage of any opportunity to be outdoors, to take a walk, or to ride a bike. To better integrate our existing trails and greenways, the city has submitted and is advocating for a federal grant application for an extension of 2.6 miles of multimodal facilities and the Tampa River Walk on the west bank of the Hillsborough River, which will result in over 12 miles of contiguous trails connecting Gandy to Ebor City. We will also construct the next two phases of the Green Spine and continue planning and design of future phases, Green Artery, and other mobility projects like Flora-Braska, which will feature an off-street trail. As we explore new and expanded means of mobility, we will also need to focus on improving safety on our roadways. That's why we're integrating Vision Zero into all projects. Our goal is to eliminate traffic deaths and serious injuries as no one should have to fear for their life on one of our roads or crossing one of our streets. This is a bold plan, but it's a plan we are fully committed to because safety has to be a priority. By planning and constructing complete streets with proven safety elements, we can create a safer transportation system for all. We have a number of goals to improve our infrastructure and mobility because it's one of the most pressing issues facing our city today. To help us achieve our goals, we will deploy technology solutions to mobility challenges, such as smart parking and urban mobility. By embracing innovation and leveraging technology, we can move forward towards a smarter transportation system fit for a 21st century. We've covered a lot of topics here today, and I know we still have a lot of work to do together. But if we truly want to make a difference and transform Tampa's tomorrow, then we have to look at the bigger picture. And that brings me to our last strategic goal, sustainability and resilience. I often say that sustainability and resilience is the glue that keeps it all on together, and it's true. If we want to build a stronger, more sustainable city, then we have to ensure the foundation is in place to weather any storm, meet our growing needs, and lift up every neighborhood in our city as we rise together. Through sustainability and resilience, we strive to promote connected, healthy, and vibrant neighborhoods. Climate change is something that affects every single one of us, and our vulnerable neighborhoods are especially impacted. To tackle this important issue, the city will develop a climate action and equity plan focused on climate preparedness, energy efficiency, and environmental protection. We will also be reviewing all city-owned real estate and identifying areas for targeted sustainability uses, including green space, community gardens, solar alternatives, and much, much more. Because if you lead by example, others will follow. That's why I've asked our staff to review and offer recommendations to the city building code and permitting process that reflect changing hazards and find innovative ways to incentivize green building practices. We want our buildings to be healthy and resilient places. And speaking of leading by example, we also have to look at our own internal policies and procedures. A strong city values its employees' health, safety, and welfare to best serve the community. A strong city also cares for taxpayer assets, which support high-quality services. In an effort to integrate sustainability and resiliency, we will provide training and orientations to City of Tampa staff and implement internal policies that ensure decisions and purchases are made through the lens of sustainability and resilience. The city will also take steps to increase sustainability through our services and at our facilities. One way we will do this is by increasing water conservation and improving water security through our Water Wise Collaboration. As evidence of this, the city is working towards a LEED for City Certification by the end of the year, and the Tampa Convention Center is also pursuing a LEED designation. And finally, in order to build a strong city and plan for a future, we will strengthen our regional collaboration and resilience. While we often train to respond to emergencies caused by hurricanes and flooding, COVID-19 taught us we have to prepare for the unexpected. The city will increase the coordination and collaboration between regional partners that have shared interests and risks, such as emergency management and homeland defense and security. The City of Tampa will work with key stakeholders to reimagine preparedness efforts through prevention, mitigation, response, and recovery planning. We will also improve connectivity with academic and practitioner partners through robust intern programs, grant opportunities, and technical training. All of these efforts will support our emergency response planning and help us build a stronger, more resilient city. I want to thank you all once again for your time and for the important role you play in transforming Tampa's tomorrow. I know that we are all more committed than ever to taking action on the big issues impacting our community. And with your help, we can lift up every neighborhood and ensure we continue rising together. Despite every challenge, our city has already made major strides towards transforming Tampa's tomorrow, and this is just the beginning. I look forward to working with you to achieve our vision and create a better future for all who live, work, and play in our great city. Thank you.
All right, good morning, Chairman. Good morning, Council. Good morning, public. We're going to transform now to the content of the budget, and this is John Bennett, Chief of Staff. And I will be joined by Dennis Rorero, the Chief Financial Officer, and Mike Perry, our Budget Officer. Next slide, please. As you saw today, the theme of Lift Up Local is now going to be embedded into our value and vision statement going into FY 21 course, and you'll see that throughout the presentation. Next slide, please. All right, so the agenda forthcoming is, I first want to talk about the Mayor's Strategic Plan and the goals that we'll be setting, starting with fiscal year 21. And then I'll turn it over to Mr. Rorero and Mr. Perry to talk about some of the things you've already been briefed on that include the COVID-19 risk factors, the challenges, and of course, we always want to keep our eye on the opportunities going forward. We want to talk about the reprogramming of this fiscal year's recommendation on the Social Action and Arts Fund, normally known as the non-departmental 200 funds in the past that serve our nonprofit communities. And then Mr. Rorero and Mr. Perry will also talk about our exceptional bond ratings, which you heard the mayor talk about in her speech. And then finally, we will walk through the fiscal year 21 recommended budget, and you will all have an electronic link, as I remember Council asked to go green as recently as last meeting. Next slide, please. So first, I want to point out this infographic made by Marketing Communications that kind of ties together the city's mission statement, the vision statement, and of course, the values that we just talked about lifting up our local community, and our five strategic goals that the mayor just walked through in her speech, all underscored in the bottom by a strong financial opportunity and responsibility program that serves this great city of Tampa. And you can see that in those five strategic goals that we start with our service, which is really why we all exist, strengthening community-centric service. And then we go into those Transforming Tampa Tomorrow items of enhancing our workforce development, increasing our housing affordability, improving our infrastructure and mobility, and the nice wraparound, or what staff has called the mortar to all of these these pieces of the mosaic of establishing sustainability and resilience. Next slide, please. To unpack that a little bit further, you can see that each of these strategic goals have multiple sub-goals, if you will, that lead us to these deliverables. And the way I'd like you to think about this, at least metaphorically, is, you know, we talk about in business what's called the iron triangle, where you take time, resources, and quality and make sure they're balanced. And what we're trying to do, as your government into the community, is to create an accountable triangle where our budget or our fiscal responsibility, which really translates to resources, is tied to a strong strategic plan, and most importantly, as Council has heard us say all along, a good enterprise performance management. So what we want to do is make sure that there's alignment between the strategic plan, the resources that City Council approves, or hopefully approves as we go forward, to support the community, and then we want to measure that. And by doing that, we will stay efficient, effective, and equitable for all neighborhoods in the community. Next slide, please. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Rorero, who's going to talk through some of the challenges that you've heard over the last four or five months that the city has faced together. Thank you.
Good morning, Council. Once again, this is Dennis Rorero, Chief Financial Officer. As you know, from your experience, a budget process for a city of this size is always challenging. But as you heard the mayor say, this budget process has entailed some extra challenges associated with the pandemic. Here, we're going to go into some detail about how it's impacted us, how we think it will continue to impact us, and what we're doing about it. Next slide, please. You've seen this slide before during the mid-year presentation in May, and it's still just as applicable. These responsibilities will continue to be the bedrock for dealing with the pandemic. You see at the top, protecting the public, our number-one goal, protecting you, me, us, all of our employees, and our assets, reducing our expenses when necessary to support critical core functions, and maintaining that strong fund balance and strong financial position that we've enjoyed for so many years. Next slide, please. Again, as a refresher, we've applied over $11 million in budget reductions in the current fiscal year in an effort at bolstering that financial position. You see here the freezing of positions and equipment purchases. And in the current year, fiscal year 20, we're just beginning to enjoy the fruits of that debt restructuring Council approved a few months ago. As you've heard the Chief of Staff say, in fiscal year 21, that restructuring is going to be the difference between dog paddling and drowning. And it'll continue to assist us going forward through fiscal year 22, so thank you once again. Next slide, please. To give these impacts some context, you see here our losses compared to what we spent on Hurricane Irma just a short time ago. We've already nearly doubled the expenses and the revenue losses at a near doubling again. Totally over $40 million of adverse impacts in this fiscal year alone. Next slide, please. And this sums it up. From a fiscal year 20 perspective, this pandemic has come with some heavy hits, and the hits are simply likely to get heavier. Our collective adverse impact just for the current fiscal year in our revenues is almost $24 million. And it's not just a $24 million loss in revenues. It's a loss in revenues of our most valuable. The general fund, as you know, is our unrestricted funding source. We can spend on just about anything we want. That's going down. The community investment tax is another major revenue source that we use on projects, important projects, such as parks, sidewalks, and public safety vehicles. You see at the bottom right, an anticipated impact of over $55 million in this year alone. Now, you've heard me say before, and I'll say it again, we're very confident we'll get reimbursed for most of our expenses. It's about $20 million so far, and that's a very positive, very happy about that. We'll be bringing a state public assistance grant agreement before you in the near future for that reimbursement. However, as you heard the mayor say earlier, revenue recovery is going to be vital. And right now, candidly, it's very, very iffy as talks take place at the federal level. Next slide, please. Next year, fiscal year 2021, more of the same unfortunately, and likely to get worse overall. Again, the loss of our most, or the reduction, excuse me, of our most valuable revenues. And again, we're deferring some things we wanted to do and not funding some others. You see here, items in technology, vehicle replacement, and personnel costs were simply not funded. At the bottom right, an anticipated $72 million impact next year. And at the bottom, for a total two-year impact of over $127 million. This has been a challenging environment. Next slide. The Social Action and Arts Fund. Next slide, please. As you heard the mayor say earlier, we've partnered for years with many nonprofit organizations to the tune of over $1 million annually. We're going to keep doing that, of course. They're very valuable partnerships. And at least initially, we've submitted funding at the same amounts. But moving forward, we're going to treat these more like grants, monitoring performance, and giving that funding every quarter only if those agencies achieve their objectives and outcomes. This is simply good business practice, and it's consistent with our goals of accountability, financial responsibility, and potentially, potentially opening up other opportunities for those nonprofits out there that have not enjoyed this supplement. Bottom line, it's all about what return are we getting for our investment? And is what they're doing consistent with the city's mission and strategic plan? I'll turn it over to the Chief of Staff to add some comments.
Thank you, Mr. Rorero. As the mayor, and you heard Mr. Dennis talk about the Social Action and Arts Fund, this is a project we've been working on sometime, actually dating all the way back to the adoption of the FY 20 budget. And we know that our nonprofits have been hit hard during the COVID challenges. And the mayor had directed us to do everything we could to make sure that we try and keep the nonprofits afloat. So you will see those opportunities still exist for our current partners. But at the same time, as you heard Mr. Rorero say, that we want to add some support and accountability to the process. And so what we are presenting you today is kind of a living list. And what that means is that as the partners apply and provide accountability toward their specific projects that align with the city's mission and strategic plan, we will look to either add or massage funds as people present their, what we call logic models, which is a very simple form to fill out that talks about some of the revenue streams, going back to their resources, and how our money or your dollars as taxpayers will support these nonprofits, and then move into those deliverables. What inputs, outputs, and outcomes will they show over each quarter? So as Council gets approached by some of the nonprofits, be confident that you can send them to us and we can help launch that process. And as we mentioned earlier, this will be a living list. So we look forward to working with Council on this, and I will turn it back over to Mr. Rorero.
Thank you, Chief. I'll turn the presentation now over to our Budget Officer, Mike Perry, to talk about our credit ratings and debt. Mike?
Next slide, please. Good morning, Mr. Chair of City Council, Mike Perry, Budget Officer. Those credit ratings look really good. It's taken a long time and a lot of hard work to achieve that. And it's going to take a And it's going to take a lot of hard work to maintain those credit rating agencies. Recently, the very top one, the issue of credit rating, is really the report card of the city's financial stability and where we are now. You can see that we've received one AAA from S&amp;P, which is the highest rating the government can achieve. And Moody's and Fitch has assigned us one credit below. It's going to, again, it's going to take a lot of hard work and effort to be able to sustain that. Recently, we just closed on a water and sewer bond deal. It was the first upgrade for this administration when Moody's awarded us a AAA. And you can see that we have AAA ratings across the board in our water and sewer bonds. We're one of two Florida utilities to have three AAA ratings, and we're very proud of that. Of course, thank you, city council. Thank the prior city council and Mayor Castor and her administration, and the previous administration for seeing the need to raise rates and implement the base fee in order for us to achieve those credit rating agencies, and for us the ability to go ahead and issue those bonds, which we closed on recently. Next slide. This is an example of the outstanding principle. If you're looking from the outside, what that is telling you is we have a very good debt profile. The green line reflects the recently issued water and wastewater bonds, and you can see it's a very smooth spend down going out to 2054, which is when the term ends on the most recent bonds. And the blue line represents the governmental bonds. And you can see we're paying off more debt in the first nine years between now and fiscal year 30 than we are going out to 2046. What this also shows is our debt capacity to be able to issue future debt in order to achieve those great things the city wants to do. Next slide. And again, this reflects the debt profile for the city. You can see where the blue lines, which represent the governmental debt, start decreasing and really goes down to about the $10 million level starting in 2030. And that really shows we have significant debt capacity starting in 2030. And in 2046, right now, based on the current debt, we'll pay off all our governmental debt. And with that, I'll pass, oh, I'm sorry, next slide. I'm sorry about that. Just wanted to remind everybody that we've had some recent debt issuances in the last six months. We did the non-adborum note, which has been mentioned before, that $13 million and that $45.3 million, that was significant, important, because it provided us cash flow savings so that we could address and fund those critical functions we needed to do in the 2021 budget. And it will give us significant cash or sufficient cash as we go and start planning the 2022 budget, which there are a lot of unknowns. Mayor Castor talked about electric utility tax and sales tax. The biggest unknown coming in 2022 is what impact COVID-19 will have, if any, on the property of taxable values. As a reminder, and Dennis will talk about this, is taxable values went up 9% this past year. We don't know what COVID-19's impact will have on the 2022 taxable value. And then you see the issuance of $450 million of water and wastewater bonds, $347 million of new money, and we did a refunding of $91 million. That refunding of that $91 million saved us over $14 million in interest payments. That is a significant savings, and we're real proud of the team that we worked with to issue the bonds, that guided us, that worked with us in order to achieve those savings. We have two debt issuances coming up in the near future. We're looking at doing a refunding and some new money on the community investment tax. That will be occurring sometime in September, October. And then in the fall, I mean, I'm sorry, in the spring, we're looking at doing another stormwater issue for about $55 million. Coming up on your August 20 meeting, you will actually be asked to approve a reimbursement resolution for the stormwater program that will allow staff to go out and construct up to $110 million of stormwater projects. That is normally done in anticipation of a debt issuance, and that reimbursement resolution will cover this $55 million and a future $55 million issue that is programmed in about two to three years. And with that, I will turn it back over to Mr. O'Hara.
Thank you, Mike. This is Dennis again. You know, as Mr. Perry shared with you, there has been a great deal of activity very recently in debt issuances, just under half a billion dollars between the issuances and the refunding. Just want to reiterate, you know, we are able to do that, and we'll continue to be able to issue hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars in additional debt over the next few years because of our credit ratings and our strong financial position. Moreover, we'll be able to do that for less money. Next slide, please. And now, council, our fiscal year 2021 recommended budget. It is big, at nearly $1.3 billion. As you heard the mayor say earlier, it's the city's biggest yet. And at a 20% increase compared to the current year, it's the city's biggest increase in at least a decade, primarily due to things such as the expansion of our utilities capital project program, negotiated labor contracts, additional staffing to support parks and recreational programs, and emergency medical services, increased operating and capital equipment spending for public safety, and the additional required contributions to the community redevelopment areas. I think this budget further confirms, if any confirmation was needed, that despite the challenges, we are continuing to move ambitiously forward with our goals. You see here our breakout of the major funds, and of course, the biggest ones remain the general fund and the enterprise fund. Next slide, please. And here we break those funds out, as we typically do, into their respective major components. On the left, public safety, very large portion of the general fund, parks and recreation, another not insubstantial portion, rounded out primarily between public works, economic development, and central government. On the right, of course, as part of the enterprise funds, you have our utilities, parking, the solid waste department. It's a great deal going on. Next slide, please. Zeroing in on the general fund, as you know, near and dear to our hearts is the general fund balance, a key indicator of our financial health and an important benchmark for rating agencies. You see here along the bottom, we project we'll have to use some of ours to get us through this fiscal year. But we've managed to craft a budget next year that allows us to maintain that important 23% of expenditures rather than continuing to spend it down. In this environment, I think that is worth noting. Next slide, please. Here, you see our fund balance historically hovering between 23% and 24% over the last seven years and into fiscal year 21. It's a nice picture of stability. We have continued to reference and re-reference that with the rating agencies, and they appreciate that safety, that savings account. Next slide, please. Council, the next few slides highlight our three-year agreements with the collective bargaining units. You see here the amalgamated transit union. They're negotiated and merit pay raises. The $15 an hour minimum pay, we're very proud of that. And at the bottom, an overwhelming contract approval rate. You're going to see those enthusiastic approvals for all three unions. And I think that reflects very well on the discussions, negotiations, and the partnerships that we've all nurtured last year, this year, as we've locked in this three-year contract for all the unions. Very successful dialogue. Next slide, please. Next up, the International Association of Firefighters and their agreement highlights. You see their negotiated and step pay increases, the healthcare trust that they're entering into with PBA that will kick off next year, special pay increases and reimbursements, and once again, a very successful approval rate to the contract. Next slide, please. The Police Benevolent Association and their highlights. Again, their negotiated and step increases, their special pays, inclusion of military leave, flex time for special events, and the contract approval rate. I wanted to highlight these also because these are multi-year contracts. They involve, you know, the special pays and the increases and the merits and the steps that you've seen. It's going to cost more money going forward. But the fact that we've got a blueprint, and we know what those increases are going to be for the next few years, provide a great deal of stability looking ahead, a great deal of stability for us as we do our planning, and a great deal of stability for the rating agencies. They know we're not going to be surprised over the next couple of years because we've entered into a multi-year agreement. If there's anything, well, I guess there's anything in this environment nobody likes, it's uncertainty, and this takes away some of that uncertainty. Next slide, please. Next up is our grants program. Council, this program has really matured over the last year as we've aligned our efforts not only within the organization, but as you see here also with our strategic goals. And it's an ambitious program. We plan on pursuing nearly $82 million worth of grant opportunities next year. And this year, we're awaiting notification of awards for $42 million that we've already applied for. Again, it's coordinating internally and leveraging those efforts with potential outside partners. Next slide, please. As you know, balancing this budget and maintaining our fund balance doesn't come without some trade-offs. We've been forced to reduce in some of these areas. You see on the slide, freezing positions, reducing contractual services, reducing travel, and some other things that we would like to do, but we're not going to do in fiscal year 21. Next slide, please. These are the deferrals, things we hope to fund as we see what happens with the economic recovery and the revenue recovery. But you see a substantial amount we're not going to be doing right now with technology, vehicle replacement, and personnel costs. Next slide, please. We turn our attention to the pension funds next. As you heard the mayor say, we are continuing the history or the city's history of commitment to our pension funds, fully funding the annual required contribution as we always have and always will. You've heard us say before that we've never taken a pension holiday, which involves skipping an annual contribution. And during some times, especially in times like these, candidly, the temptation, it's there because this is a significant amount of money. As a result from this stewardship, though, the Fire and Police Pension Fund remains in great shape at nearly 95% funded. This puts it at the upper echelon of pension funds across the country. You see it's costing us more next year as what we contribute is subject to a number of factors, including return on investments. That's one of the reasons we watch the market so closely. Actuarial calculations and compensation costs. Next slide, please. You see here the General Employees Pension Fund, also very well-funded at nearly 90% and remaining somewhat level next year. So I just want to reemphasize, our pension funds are very well-grounded, and we have a history, we really do, of very good stewardship over these funds. Next slide, please. Annual healthcare costs. As we have been very fortunate enough to do over the last few years, I'd like to again highlight our city health plan successes. You're familiar with this chart from previous years, and our comparison to the national healthcare cost trend is obviously very, very positive. Next slide, please. Our continuing emphasis on proactive and preventive actions for our employees and our families continues to pay off. You hear the phrase win-win bandied about, I think probably a little too often these days, but this is truly a win-win proposition. It saves the city money, it saves our employees and their families' money, and it contributes to and improves their and our health and well-being. At the bottom, you see our continuing efforts at opening a third clinic so more of us can take advantage of these services more often. Our clinics are very popular, and they've paid off. Next slide, please. And you see some of the statistics there. I'll direct your attention, if I may, to the lower half, the improvements in health as identified by metrics. Body mass index, diabetes-related levels, blood pressure, bad cholesterol. Very, very impressive, and we're very proud of that. I hope you are, too. Next slide, please. The employee-population ratio comparison. You see here that since the Great Recession, the city has continued to reduce our ratio of employees to population to the lowest now among some similar cities, including our good friend across the bay, down the I-4 corridor to Orlando, Fort Lauderdale, and Tallahassee. Now, this is a snapshot, of course, and not by any means an exhaustive picture. But as we continue to say, we're doing more with less, I think this paints a very supportive picture of that. Next slide, please. And you see that prior, just prior to the Great Recession, in 2007, we were over 5,000 full-time employees. And then, of course, as the Great Recession hit, we drastically reduced the number of positions. We stayed stable for many, many years. And you can see in 2018, 2019, especially 2020 and 2021, they start going up. The current year, 2020, the significant increase is primarily associated with our takeover of the Waste-to-Energy Facility at McKay Bay. Not to mention, you know, we just issued all of that debt. We're going to need resources and people to continue with the pipes program. So that uptick is primarily associated with our expansion and our continuing ambitions to do what we put off for so long. In 2021, the increase there is primarily associated with fire department, firefighters, and service personnel at parks and recreation as we try to provide, as you heard the chief of staff say, an increasing level of service for the many activities we have throughout the city. Next slide, please. Here is the position summary. Again, even though if you go to the bottom there, fiscal year 2021, the proposed positions of 4,666, it is still nearly 400 positions less than prior to the Great Recession at the top there in 2007. I'll turn it over to the chief of staff now to comment on position counts.
Thank you, Mr. O'Hara. John Bennett, Chief of Staff. Just wanted to offer city council and the public an inject. I know on the agenda later today, which I will be addressing that item, that council had made a motion for a chief diversity officer. I just wanted to call out that that position is not in the summary at this time because the FTE count had settled as part of the budget presentation when the motion was made. So I will address that, but I wanted to make sure that we were transparent about that position that will be discussed later this afternoon. And we know that the budget process goes from now all the way through the other hearings. So I just wanted to call attention to that position and honor council's motion that I will address later today. Thank you, and I'll turn it back over to Mr. O'Hara.
Thank you, chief. Counsel, this is Dennis again. Next slide, please. And finally, before you is our recommended $1.3 billion five-year capital improvement program to go along with our nearly $1.3 billion recommended budget. As you've heard us say, there is a great deal taking place and yet to take place in this city. As I'm sure you're expecting, it is no surprise, I'm sorry, the emphasis is overwhelmingly on infrastructure, wastewater, water, stormwater, solid waste, facilities management. Next slide, please. As we've done for the past few years and will continue to do, we've again provided maps for all four districts and the major projects taking place next fiscal year in each of them. Up first, District Four, and as with each district, various projects for infrastructure in the neighborhoods are at the top, and also a great deal of flooding and mobility work. Next slide, please. In District Five, the Farrods Project, the mayor spoke about, also the Convention Center and Old City Hall. Next slide, please. District Six, the Rivercrest Boardwalk Seawall and Dock Project, and mobility and stormwater project. Next slide, please. And in District Seven, the inclusive playground, Forest Hills, the Babes Aharyus Golf Course, and mobility and fire station number twenty-four. Next slide, please. As Chief of Staff said earlier, in our continuing efforts at sustainability and going green, the budget books are available here at this meeting. Just a quick summary for you, we appreciate council's efforts during this year's challenges. We really do. Thank you. We have, as you've seen, and will continue to have, challenges associated with this pandemic, but we're in better shape than so many other localities out there. We really are. Thank you for your time, counsel. That ends the presentation.
Can everybody hear me?
Mr. Rob, got you.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Councilman Good. All right, we will continue now.
Mr. Chairman, if I can?
Yes, sir. Go ahead, sir. I was calling on you.
Thank you. Good morning, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of Tampa City Council. Martin Shelby, City Council Attorney. I'd like to state for the record that because of the COVID-nineteen state of emergency, this virtual meeting, uh, your first video meeting of the City Council is being held in accordance with the declarations and provisions of the Governor's Executive Order twenty-sixty-nine, as extended by EO twenty-one-seventy-nine, and by City Council Resolution Number two thousand and twenty-two-twenty-five. It is conducted by remote participation or teleconferencing, which is referred to by the State of Florida statutes and rules as communication media technology. Uh, the public has had an opportunity to use alternative methods that have been established for, uh, participating in today's meeting to offer public comment and comments at your non-quadripedical, your legislative public hearings scheduled for this morning. You will hear from, uh, the city clerk, who will provide, uh, the live comments and the pre-recorded voicemails. Uh, emails and other written communications have been distributed to City Council and, uh, will be made part of the record of today's meetings. Uh, council, with regard to public comment, I know that's going to be coming up, I'd like to remind the speakers, uh, who are going to be discussing the items on the agenda, that at the start of the meeting will only be, uh, general public comment. If you are planning to comment on any of the public hearings that are scheduled for this morning, please hold your comments until the public hearing is opened, and you will then be given the opportunity to speak. Uh, council, I believe that is it. Uh, there are some changes to the, um, addendum and, uh, a correction that needs to be made, so when you get to that, I'll be able to discuss that with you.
Thank you very much, sir. All right. We will now go to public comment. We will start with, um, anyone that is live at the Tampa Convention Center to speak during public comment. You will have three minutes to speak. If we could connect to that, um, feed, I will begin the clock, uh, and monitor the, um, the time for the three minutes. Uh, clerk?
Yes, we have one public comment speaker at the Convention Center.
Okay. All right, if that person would like to begin and state your name, I will begin the clock. You have three minutes to speak.
Good morning. My name's Ardisha Floyd, and I'm a, uh, I was born and raised here in Tampa, so this is my home. I have four demands that I am calling for a city council to make. Um, one, I would like to see the council, uh, call for the freezing of TPD's budget. I would also like to see them called to fight to reduce the jail population during the pandemic by reducing unnecessary arrests. And I would like to see them, uh, demand TPD stop targeting protests with violence. And finally, I would like to see them terminate police chief, call for the termination of police chief Dugan. Uh, I had some other things written, but after Mayor Castor's budget presentation, um, I have some other words that are specifically for her, but I guess I can just say them now as well. Um, your, your inability to imagine a world without police has everything to do with your inability to imagine a world where black people are actually taken care of. I'm going to say that again. Your inability to imagine a world without police has everything to do with your inability to imagine a world where black people are actually taken care of. That's what that is. You are in the position now where you cannot actually begin to conceive of a world where people who look like me are fully taken care of and thrive, and you don't even have an incentive to imagine that. So you're, you're not, this is particularly for the mayor. The mayor's not going to be able to tell me that the police makes me feel safe with their high level of service because they don't. Doesn't TPD not even clear forty percent of their crime? You're not going to, you're not going to use some stereotypes about crime and because I'm a black woman, Jane, so you quite literally have no idea what I'm up against to secure my safety. You cannot even think beyond your little office for one second to admit that the way this country is set up right now will never be able to take care of my people. And that's the difference between me and you. You've been uncritically internalized the system of white supremacy, so much so that you have the audacity to say crime has decreased as if that tells me anything about the state of my people. Crime has been declining for decades now, and my people are still oppressed, Jane. So no, your police are not equipped to actually bring me safety. You said to yourself, they are tasked with too much, but since you brought stats, how about the stat that only five percent of police time is spent on violent crime? So tell me more about how they're equipped to end violence. How about the, the fact that if we take thirty million dollars from the police budget, we can fund one million jobs at fifteen dollars? So you're not fooling me, Jane. You're not, none of you are. You're all complicit in the continued oppression of black people, and you hide behind the pessimism of your elected office, but let's be clear, the work you are all doing right now, the budget that Mayor Castor just presented, that is how we end up in the exact same place in ten years. And you won't even, you won't even begin to critically engage with the call to defund the police. So that's how I know you are so entrenched in the system of white supremacy. You can't continue to play dressed up with this system and tell me, a black woman, that it's going to make me safe. Not when I know, I know the abundance of safety that can actually be realized in non-punitive structures. You continuously ignore structural violence and get up on your pedestal to talk about how police help solve violence. I hope you're aware of the position that you're playing. It's not going to get you elected in five or ten years, because I'm going to be there to make sure of it.
Thank you very much. All right, next speaker, please. I believe you said there was only one, uh, live speaker at, uh, TCC, so we will then go to the, uh, people that have registered to call in. Correct, clerk?
That is correct. The next speaker we have is Craig Fox. If you can hear me, please unmute your line, and you have three minutes.
Thank you, everybody. Uh, so one thing I want to address at first is that the word "defund" doesn't accurately describe what we want. A better phrase is "safety reallocation", and there's a history on this that we all need to pay attention to. In nineteen sixty-seven, in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania's Hill District, the Freedom House Ambulance Service was the very first emergency medical service created in America. It was created after black citizens were frustrated with slow response times and lack of medical care from both police and, and fire, because at that time there was no medical training required. So Dr. Sappar worked, uh, after he lost his twelve-year-old daughter due to a similar incident, hired twenty, worked with a community, hired twenty-five black men, many who had no high school diploma, and trained them in CPR and other medical life-saving techniques. It was so good at that time that the police officers would actually request the Freedom House Ambulance Service to respond to medical incidents in white neighborhoods. Unfortunately, the police and fire departments resisted medical training to actually save lives, and the city had to reallocate funds to create a separate EMT service. I'll repeat that again. The city had to reallocate funds to create a separate EMT service. So when you talk about reallocation, we have plenty of other examples going, successful examples going on in the nation right now. In Richmond, California, there's the Office of Neighborhood Safety. It only costs around two million dollars a year. They reduce gun violence by sixty percent, by sixty percent, by sixty percent, by working with the black youth, working, using returning citizens or former incarcerated people to work with the black and brown youth, to actually provide them resources, and it reduced gun violence by sixty percent. Another example out of Eugene, Oregon, is called Gahoots. It only costs two million dollars a year. They field around twenty percent of the nine-one-one calls, and they provide non-violent medically-trained responders. They save the city seven to twelve million dollars annually. Another example in Berkeley, California, they're currently replacing their armed police with unarmed citizens to take care of traffic violations. So when you think about black lives like Sandra Bland, like Lando Castile, like so many of the black people that have been murdered at, at police stops, a system like this would actually save their lives. Other, other demands, I completely agree with the previous caller's demands, um, to freeze TPD budgets, and also let's reallocate nineteen percent towards community health programs like the ones I just stated before. We also need to reduce the jail population by reducing unnecessary arrests for non-violent offenses, and we all, and the TPD also needs to stop targeting protests with violence because I've been at peaceful protests, and the police have commented at us. We also need to replace the current police chief because over his reign, he has resulted in a forty-one percent increase in canine bites, a twenty-four percent increase in punches and kicks from officers, and a two-hundred-and-twenty-three percent increase in the use of chemical agents on, on citizens. Just because violent crime is going down does not mean we should slow it down one bit. There are better non-violent ways that we can increase safety in our community. I live in East Tampa. I love East Tampa. I love my community. I would hope that everybody does not just take the budget and rubber standard, but actually looks at these community programs that we mentioned. We look forward to talking with you further with this in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, next speaker.
Thank you. The next speaker is Angel DiAngelo.
Good morning. My name is Angel DiAngelo, and I was born and raised in Tampa, Florida, St. Joseph's Hospital, to be specific. I'm very passionate about the city. By the way, some of you are upside down. Um, so I'm very disappointed in Mayor Castor's presentation, but not surprised. I really thought Mayor Curtis Hickson was the last mayor that was elected as the white municipal party, but I guess Jane Castor has revised that. I'm not surprised. Jane Castor said a lot of wonderful things, lead by example. So let's hope the city council will be bold and courageous and lead by example. Your legacy in history is determined now. Don't look back in time and say what you did or didn't do, because we'll be sure to tell your legacy to your grandchildren. Jane Castor said brighter future for all. I guess Arthur Green Jr. didn't get that brighter future when she was police chief, nor did Sidney Richardson under Police Chief Dugan, nor Jason West got under Police Chief Jane Castor over less than two dollars of cannabis. Public safety is not the conversation we're having when we talk about giving police all these funds, and Jane Castor knows us, because she ran one of the most racist police departments in the country. FDLE says TPD solves less than forty percent of violent crimes like murder, rape, larceny, burglary, et cetera. So what they're doing, what they're getting paid to do is harass black and brown, poor, disabled, and trans people. We are calling for at least nineteen percent of the budget that's being allocated into the TPD to be moved into community programs, and you, as city council, need to do the works to the black and brown community, not just the ones that, um, you know, show up and say things that you like, the ones that say things you don't like, that make you uncomfortable. None of you can act like you don't know what we've been talking about, because RJC, as well as Dream Defenders, as well as BLM, and a lot of other groups have been talking to you all about it for years. So you're not surprised, you're not shocked, this isn't new. Um, we have alternatives. We need to get rid of Police Chief Dugan because he does not care about black people, he doesn't care about poor people. He harasses protesters and activists, and increase of use of force has gone up twenty-four percent since he's been police chief. I'm tired of paying my tax dollars for our police chief to harm people in this community. It is time to be bold and courageous and stop sucking up to the mayor and to the chief and do what you were elected to do. We need to use notice to appear option for non-violent crimes to get people out of that jail, and honestly, we need to stop policing non-violent crimes. Oydering, sleeping in the park, public intoxication, if they're not hurting someone, then it is not a crime. It is a waste of our money and time, and yours as well. We need to take some bold action now, so that way we can have a Tampa that we can be proud of. I'm ashamed. You know, we are supposed to be the beacon of diversity and hope, and we are not. We have two Tampas. We have white Anglo Tampa, and then we have marginalized Tampa, and I want to have one Tampa where everybody can thrive and everybody can win, and we cannot do that if we keep prioritizing the police, and if we are not bold enough to speak up against Mayor Jane Castor, Police Chief Dugan, they can both go for all I care, and all of you can as well. Do what is right for this city and make our mark in history. Uh, we're going to see these changes in this world one day or another. Remember the Civil Rights Movement. A lot of people didn't think we would win. What did Bull Connor think? What was he saying then, and what is he saying now, and what are we saying about him now? Who do you want to be when we look at this? Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Yes, the next speaker we have is Joseph McLennan. If you can hear me, please unmute your line, and you have three minutes.
Go ahead. Joseph McLennan.
Get on mute. Okay, we'll go back to him. Next we have is Justin Coffey.
All right. Go ahead. You have three minutes to speak.
Good morning, counsel. Thank you for your time and service. Uh, I come to you as a concerned citizen. A lot of the previous speakers, uh, they mentioned things that I definitely agree with. Um, the rhetoric that was expressed today by the mayor about us working together, leading by example, being community-centric, these are all important things, but if we're really listening to the people and focusing on their demands, well, we know what needs to be done, and a statement like, "We are not going to defund the police," is not the answer. So, uh, the demands that I'm proposing today is, uh, hiring, uh, hiring freeze on, uh, TPD, a sworn officer cap of nine hundred officers, a five percent cut to the day scale, uh, the, excuse me, the pay scale minimums, uh, and maximums at each position, and the estimated savings due to these proposals, uh, a hundred less officers would result in a range of seven-point-five million to ten million, just in salary savings, not including pension and benefits. So, um, in addition to that, uh, reducing the jail population, which is echoing what the other speaker said, and, uh, I think that a focus on transportation, homeownership, um, infrastructure and mobility, these are all great things, but, um, this all has to be done with the people in mind and with the people's input. Uh, the people cannot be, uh, separate from the changes being made. Um, an increase to the police budget is completely unacceptable, and, um, as the mayor said, that the police are asked and tasked to do too much. So, um, I think that we'd be doing a service to divest these funds and reallocate them to social services, um, such as affordable housing, mental health services, uh, public transportation, et cetera. Um, another concern that I have is making voting safe for people. Um, so I just want to put that on record and, um, have everyone on council, uh, think about ways to increase the safety for people, um, going out to vote, and with that, I yield my time.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Thank you. Next speaker we have is Debbie King. If you can hear me, please unmute your line. You have three minutes to speak.
Debbie King.
Oh, hello.
Yes.
Morning, everybody. Good morning. It's good to see you all. So I'm Debbie King. I'm with Mi Familia Volta. We're a nonprofit organization representing over twenty-eight-hundred Hispanic Tampa residents, and we work on issues important to the Latino community. So, um, if you, I'm sure you all know this, if you want to know the priorities of a society, you look to the budget and who is included in making those budgeting decisions. I'm here to urge you to listen to all residents of Tampa and not prioritize, prioritize the rich or privileged few. So Mayor Castor mentioned safety a lot. If safety is a priority, we must acknowledge that our budget militarizes the police and does not go far enough to address climate change. So we support Ardisha's and the others' commenters' information on what defunding the police is. And to be clear for folks who are scared of that, defunding the police is simply shrinking the scope of police responsibilities to their true need, and shifting most of what the city does for safety to entities that are better equipped to meet those needs. So we need to move at least nineteen percent of the budget into services that are recommended by black, indigenous, and other people of color like Ardisha. So we are at an inflection point in this. The special report from the United Nations Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change calls for global CO2 emissions to start to decline well before two thousand and thirty to avoid the most severe effects of climate change. We are in Tampa. We are one of the most threatened We are in Tampa. We are one of the most threatened cities in the country. By delaying action, any action beyond 2030, wasting time wondering if it's possible, which seems to be a common theme in politicians, as Ardisha had mentioned, limiting what's possible instead of doing what's needed to keep us safe, is threatening our future and passing the bill and deadly threats to our children and grandchildren. So we need a climate action plan for the city of Tampa in this budget to do a just transition to 100% clean energy, renewable energy from wind and solar by 2030. It is doable. Cities are already at 100% clean energy all over the country. And renters must be included. We cannot focus on homeowners, which is a lot of what of the work has been done. It's been great work, but we need to include other communities. Contracts and living wage jobs with access to a union must be proactively given to black people, brown people, women, and other non-binary genders. So I look forward to talking to all with you further about this and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next we have is Brooke Erit.
Yes, good morning. My name is Brooke Erit and I'm the Florida Organizer with Food and Water Action and Food and Water Watch. Thanks for being here this morning. I'm speaking on behalf of our nearly 2,700 Tampa resident members and I echo the previous speaker Debbie King's comments. Tampa is at a crossroads where the intersection of climate change, racial injustice, and an air pollution-driven pandemic have never been more apparent. Our black and brown communities, already struggling with police violence and economic insecurity, are the same folks who are most impacted by climate change, the COVID-19 pandemic, utility shut-offs, and lack of access to essential programs. Immediate action is needed to protect our most vulnerable populations from climate and environmental injustice. It is time to reinvest in our communities to ensure the future of Tampa. And that is why we must support the line item in the budget for a climate action and equity plan to provide funding for a city council-driven plan for a just and equitable transition to 100% clean renewable energy from solar, wind, and tidal sources by 2030. The longer we allow climate injustice to reign in Tampa, the longer we are labeling those residents who are struggling as disposable. No one is disposable. Only a swift transition will protect the health, safety, and well-being of our frontline communities. A transition that provides programs for all Tampa residents, not just homeowners. A transition that invests in the infrastructure of the most heavily impacted neighborhoods. A transition that expands strong family sustaining opportunities and jobs in that transition. A commitment for a just and equitable move to 100% clean energy needs to ensure accountability and community involvement. Our frontline low-income black and brown communities must not only be included in the process, they must lead it. And only through a council-led resolution will we ensure that that transparent, just, swift, and equitable transition is made to 100% by 2030. Also, in order to make this happen, we must support having a chief diversity officer for the city. Our municipal workers need to have the assurance and training to ensure that diversity and justice are at the forefront of any work or any plan. With a chief diversity officer, the city is investing and preparing a workforce that will make diversity, equity, and inclusion a priority. Tampa is one of the 10 most vulnerable cities in the world and we are posed to be the leader to a swift and just transition to a sustainable and resilient future. And that is why I call on you to support the line item in the budget for a climate action and equity plan to provide funding for a city council-driven resolution to adjust an equitable transition to 100% clean renewable energy by 2030. Thank you for your time and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Yes, sir. The next speaker we have, we're going to go back to Joseph McLennan.
Okay. Go ahead. You have three minutes.
Okay. So my name is Joseph McLennan. I'm from Silver Springs. I want to say good morning to the city council and its support staff. I want to thank all of you for being patient with many of us who are in the local politics. We all take note of your actions, both good and bad, such as Councilman Vera back to the CRB meeting to make his presence known, Guido Meniscalco for protesting with the people, Councilman Carlson for creating an Economic Development Council to help address inequality, John Dingfelder for his consistent concern over civil liberties, and Councilman Goots for his efforts to replace the Fair Oaks Community Center. And for the past three to four months, you've all heard a lot about defunding the police and other ideas such as creating a mental and social health task force like what St. Pete has recently done. I also know that you'd like to hear more specific solutions related to these topics. I'm here to propose that the city of Tampa conducts a feasibility and implementation study this upcoming fiscal year in order to determine the need for this task force based on how many calls our police department, the Crisis Center, and Grace Point receive in a year that revolve around mental, societal health issues such as suicide, manic episodes, drug addiction, overdose, homelessness, and other topics. Look, burden our police department because they aren't as equipped to handle these situations as a social worker or a crisis counselor would be. This idea stems from Oakland, California. The city council wanted to put a $40,000 study in 2019 to determine if such a social and mental health task force was needed there to take the burden from their police department. The study showed the need for this independent task force and they are currently budgeting and setting up to start it in 2021. Tampa should conduct a similar study in the upcoming fiscal year and data should be collected from the Crisis Center, Grace Point, and TPD. There's no reason to not conduct the study due to the cost effectiveness in the community. Clearly, there's a need for this task force. And Mayor Castor said herself that TPD has already passed with doing too much. I have a link to the Oakland study that I will be emailing to all of you this after meeting, after this meeting. Thank you and I yield my time.
Thank you very much. All right, next speaker.
Yes, sir. The next speaker we have is Philip Compton. If you can hear me, Mr. Compton, please unmute yourself. You have three minutes.
Good morning, council. Phil Compton, 1430 East Park Circle, Tampa. Speaking on behalf of the 2,618 active members of the Tampa Bay Sierra Club. We strongly support the mayor's points on sustainability and resilience and her line item budget proposal for a climate action and equity plan that will provide funding to plan the city's transition to 100% clean energy. We also support a resolution by council to attain this goal by 2030 and a planning process that takes place in a transparent way to include the entire community. And we also support creating a chief diversity officer for the city. 165 cities around the United States have already passed such 100% clean energy for all resolutions and are now well on their way to a 100% clean energy future for all their residents. St. Pete, Largo, Dunedin, Safety Harbor, Sarasota, and Orlando are just some of these cities who we can work with to help find our way to Tampa's clean energy future. Over 50 US cities are now fully operating their communities on 100% clean energy for all their citizens. We must do the same. Thousands of our black and brown citizens now face losing their electrical service next month due to their inability to stay current with their TECO bill. Black and brown people with low incomes ironically get the highest energy bills. We must make improving the energy efficiency of homes in our lower-income neighborhoods, both homeowners and rental properties, a top priority of our climate action and equity plan. It's the quickest, easiest, and cheapest way to create social and environmental justice and to move our city as quickly as possible to end our use of fossil fuels. We can more quickly replace the reduced energy demand that we achieve with more efficient homes and businesses with solar energy and help ensure that no one loses power because they can't pay a big bill. Housing won't be affordable and Tampa won't be sustainable or equitable until people have homes that don't waste energy and stick them with high bills. That's why Tampa's frontline communities, our black and brown neighborhoods, whose voices are too often not heard here in City Hall, must be included in the climate action and equity planning process. Thanks. And we look forward to working with council and the mayor's office.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
All right. Next speaker we have is Allison Date. If you can hear me, please unmute your line and you have three minutes.
Good morning. My name's Allison Date. And, um, I reflect the views of several of the, uh, environmental, local environmental groups in strongly supporting the line items that reflect our economist's transition to 100% clean energy by 2030. And that's based on include, being inclusive of diversity and justice. And in relationship, in relation to that, um, I would like to have this vision toward sustainability really reflect two groups that are often overlooked as decisions are made during this kind of transition of development. First, the economically insecure and often lowest-line communities need to be given adequate consideration and representation as they tend to bear most of the negative consequences of any kind of unhealth and of the unhealthy consequences of development and undesirable, um, results of, uh, of climate change. Secondly, I think it's important to remember and protect and give a voice to our undeveloped public lands and wildlife habitats. These environments should be guarded for all their irreplaceable benefits to our health and well-being. And, um, so I was happy to hear of the plan to expand green spaces throughout the city by the mayor. Reusing vacant and already developed real estate should be the preferable option for further developments, not using undeveloped land, which I don't see enough of that happening. There's so much real estate that's not being used and it, and it just sits there for years. And so maybe that could become a priority of using, uh, that kind of place for, uh, further development. And I would also like to make a comment about something that I just learned about, that the, that the governor actually has approved the development of the TECO project to rebuild their, uh, facility. And, uh, I think that needs to be seriously reconsidered. I understand that the, the building hasn't begun. But, uh, natural gas, although it's cleaner than coal, it's still a fossil fuel and has some very, uh, negative environmental impacts on production and transportation. This is not a form of clean energy, so it goes against the clean energy plans. The environmental consequences of building in the present location could also lead to, uh, uh, environmental consequences. And I, I wonder if there's been a, uh, environmental, uh, impact study, uh, done on that because it seems like in the present location, there could be some devastating consequences on the Tampa Bay community due to the severe, due to severe weather and rising water levels. So thank you for listening to my comments.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Yes. Next speaker we have is Mary Elizabeth Estrada. If you can hear me, please unmute your line and you have three minutes.
Thank you. Hi, council. So thank you for giving me the time to speak this morning. My name is Mary Elizabeth Estrada. I am a Florida Climate Pudge Organizer with the Clio Institute, which is a nonprofit dedicated to climate education, engagement, and advocacy. I'm also here on behalf of the Tampa Bay Climate Alliance. I currently live in Seminole Heights and although I am not a Tampa native, my parents were both raised here. They are USF alum and I was a frequent visitor growing up to visit my Cuban relatives. So many of you already know the impacts of climate change, but for those of you who don't, I will share with you all that is at stake if we do not invest in the climate crisis now. Our economy, the tourism industry, public health, property, food security, displacement of vulnerable communities, stronger hurricanes, and storm surges will be the main focus of my generation. To top it all off, black indigenous and brown communities are going to be the worst impacted by climate change due to economic inequality and the inability to recover quickly from hurricanes and flooding. And as we have heard over the past couple of months, communities of color and specifically black communities are facing issues like police brutality and racial inequality, which is why I support a chief diversity officer for the city of Tampa. The burden of climate change has been put on young people like me to solve this crisis when we could have been investing in it years ago. The solutions are available. It's just a matter of implementation and strategic investment at this point. The solution to this is investing in an equitable and just future for all communities in the city of Tampa, in part by transitioning to 100% renewable energy by 2030. The impacts of the climate crisis are not in 10 or 30 years. The impacts are here and they are now. They have been here. We already see flooding. We already see extreme heat. And we see food insecurity exacerbated by hotter temperatures. What we do now will impact not only our current society, but also generations to come. That is why I applaud the creation of a climate action plan and I will continue to engage on how to most effectively address the climate impacts we are facing today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker we have is Lisandra Morales. If you can hear me, please unmute your line. You have three minutes.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead. You have three minutes.
Okay. Good morning, councilmen. My name is Lisandra Morales and I am the Tampa Bay Gen Clio Leader for the Clio Institute. Like the last speaker said, Clio is an organization that empowers communities across all levels of society with climate science education and demands climate policies from our elected leaders. With hundreds of members here in the city, we highlight the urgency of climate action while championing solutions for a resilient future. I am here to applaud Mayor Castor's step towards solving the global climate crisis in the form of her new climate action and equity plan. I've lived in Tampa for the better half of my adolescence and in my time here, the threat of climate change has become more and more tangible since. I'm asthmatic, meaning that the air quality levels are a threat to my health depending on how badly my asthma reacts to the polluted air I'm taking in. And for my community, climate change has never been a story about ice caps melting in the Arctic. It's been the cause of water pollution, poor food security, increasingly violent storms over the years, and will soon drive Tampa residents out of their homes due to rising sea levels. Immediate action is needed to protect our most vulnerable populations from climate and environmental injustice. And being that Tampa is one of the most vulnerable cities in the world, we could start to be a leader in making things right. So while this plan is a positive step in our fight against climate change, the first goal of Tampa's action should include moving forward is providing funding for the city's transfer to 100% renewable energy by 2030. Our black and brown communities, already struggling with police violence and economic insecurity, are the same folks who are most impacted by climate change, outrageous utility bills and lack of access to essential programs. Switching to efficient energy is the quickest, easiest, and cheapest way to lower both energy bills and energy demand. But we need money in the budget to help the city develop a plan to get us there. On top of that, the commitment for a just and equitable move to 100% clean energy needs to ensure accountability and community involvement, which is also why I support appointing a jet chief diversity officer for the city. Those who will be making 100% just transition to clean energy need to have the assurance and training to ensure that diversity and justice are at the forefront, forefront of any plan. With the chief diversity officer, the city is investing in preparing a workforce that will make diversity, equity, and inclusion a priority. The time for deliberating is over and the aftermath of your decisions will be felt hardest by my generation and those after me. So please start to effectively address the climate impacts we are facing today and those in the future. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. All right, next speaker.
All right. Next speaker we have is Shabam Shakla. If you can hear me, please unmute yourself and you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good morning. I was here a couple, I was here a couple of weeks ago with my fellow community members urging you all to defund the Tampa Police Department. And first off, just a quick thank you to Councilman Carlson for your continuous support. Um, but I'm here looking for one number and we're going to keep coming back until that number is where we want it. How much money have you defunded Tampa Police Department by? For the past two months, we've been protesting, we've been arrested, we've been pepper sprayed. And after all that, if you all still support this gloated TPD budget that Dugan and Mayor Castor proposed, then it is abundantly clear which side you all are on. Now, I fully understand that defunding the police sounds radical or even scary, but the last meeting, one of my friends asked you all to read up on police abolition by people like Angela Davis and Professor Vitali. But I understand that you all are busy, so I'm going to give you very specific examples on what this would look like. Imagine you were experiencing intimate partner violence. So you call a number and a trauma-informed crisis intervention specialist meets you in a safe place. An hour later, you are working together to make a plan that will keep you safe for the long term. Imagine you see someone selling harmful drugs to youth who are overdosing. So you're connected to a substance use service that intervenes in drug So you're connected to a substance use service that intervenes in drug transactions, and the youth are supported in healthy outcomes, and the seller takes accountability for harm. Imagine you're on the bus and see someone is behaving erratically and is in harm's way. So you text a number, an unarmed urgent responder trained in behavioral and mental health comes within five minutes. An hour later, that person is safe and getting the support that they need. Imagine you own a convenience store and catch someone stealing food to feed their family. So you connect them to a mutual aid network for immediate help, and they work with a financial task force to help them economically. Imagine you're driving down I-75 and realize that your brake lights are broken. So a city employee signals for you to pull over and says, hey, how about I replace those lights for you right here so no one gets hurt? An hour later, both lights are working and you're at home safe. Imagine incidents of gun violence are rising in your neighborhood. So a trauma-informed crisis response team works with community leaders to disarm and de-escalate conflicts, and the people doing harm are connected to services that address the underlying systemic issues. Imagine you see some people sleeping on the benches at Curtis Hixon Park. So a Tampa employee comes by and checks in to see if they need a place to sleep, food, water or healthcare. And an hour later, they have a place to rest and are connected with economic advisors. Now, I know that Tampa PD doesn't need all the money that we are allocating to them, so voting to defund should be easy. Just an example, they have a $3,000 reward right now for information about the person who still paint on that ugly police mural. If they have thousands of dollars laying around to use as a reward for a victimless crime, then it's clear that their budget needs to be scrutinized. So let's defund these pigs and fund our community and vote no on this budget. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Yes, next speaker we have is Cory Weckerly.
Hello. So, you know, for most people, today is not a normal day. And it's not just because we're doing all of this virtually instead of in person. People are concerned about going out into public. People are concerned about losing their homes. People are concerned about having access to healthcare. People are concerned about losing their jobs without warning. People are concerned about violence in the streets, specifically coming from the people who are tasked to protect us. People are concerned about their rights being violated. For me personally, I'm a Black man living in America, so all of this is normal. This is, these are just normal days. My name is Cory Weckerly, and I'm a part of the Policy Committee for Black Lives Matter Tampa, and we want to take a moment today to discuss the budget process for 2020, a process we can guarantee that we will be a part of. We will not only be following developments on this budget closely, but in the coming days, we will be proposing our own budget initiatives aimed at realigning this city's monetary priorities with the American promise of the right to life, liberty and the pursuit of happiness. We will be addressing basic needs made more scarce because of COVID. We will simultaneously be engaging our elected officials to correct the disparities that have existed long before the face masks became a part of our fashion. We also want to make it very clear that we do not accept the myth of scarcity. We do not accept the idea that the city does not have the resources to address these issues. We do not accept that the city is unable to feed hungry children or provide programs to help uplift the marginalized. Further, we reject the idea that it is wise to spend $170 million on law enforcement and less than half of that on addressing the actual root causes of crime. The average American comes to these conclusions every single day, and I'm wondering why our elected officials haven't. We're not afraid to sweat details, like, like yesterday, the now infamous Back the Blue mural, which was painted without a permit while illegally blocking off a city street, was vandalized. And now we hear that the police are putting thousands of dollars into looking for the vandals, quote unquote, but not the people who broke the law to paint it. Now, we don't care about symbols as much as you think we do, but the irony is not lost on us, trust me. If anybody at City Council can say that this is, this is just and this is fair, I strongly question your, your moral judgment. So today isn't normal. Neither will tomorrow be, and this budget process will not be normal either. But if you have the political will and we have the frame of reference for new ideas, we should be working together to embrace the abnormality that our lives have become. Maya Angelou reminded us that if you are always trying to be normal, you will never know how amazing you can be. This city needs to work together with the community organizers and the community itself so that we can all be amazing together. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Yes, next speaker we have is Rozelle Coffey. If you can hear me, please unmute your line and you have three minutes to speak.
Hi, all. My name is Rozelle Coffey. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to use my voice. When drafting a budget, citizens' proposals should at minimum be considered or highly prioritized. With that being said, do you think the proposed allocation of the city's budget announced today sufficiently does so? Coming into this meeting, I think we all wanted to see the budget changed. The issue is where we differ on what should be changed. One of the biggest things holding back the potential of the public safety and bridging the gap between the people and the police is that law enforcement is not qualified for every task that we ask them to take on. We're asking too much of our officers. Many of these situations in which they are called upon, they do not have the correct tools to even begin to assess the situation. I don't know how many nonviolent calls, if any, need to be approached with a gun on the hip. That's where other forms of responders come into play. Tailored for the situations, law enforcement is clearly over-equipped to handle. One thing I want to make clear is that the people are asking for a third party to be involved in these kind of situations, not just the law enforcement reallocating personnel. Just next door, St. Pete is working with a community assistance liaison division. Tampa should have been the first to adopt this kind of partnership. That is the kind of action we need to help bridge the gap. Trust your community. And in order for the community to trust you, we need transparency, accountability, and we need consistency. If someone vandalizes a city road without a permit, even if intentions were good, that is not exempting from any kind of discipline. We need to be consistent and we need to be equal across the board. I appreciate everyone dedicating their time here, and I think we need to continue with an open dialogue in order to move forward that is followed by action. Tampa's tomorrow will look like Tampa's yesterday if we don't defund the police. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker we have is Ryan Lynn. If you can hear me, Mr. Lynn, please unmute your line, you have three minutes.
Hi, yeah, good morning, Council. My name is Ryan Lynn. I'm a climate and clean energy advocate with Environment Florida. Environment Florida is a statewide member-supported organization that protects clean air, clean water and open space. We are based in Tampa and have thousands of members across the city who are excited about the opportunity for Tampa to lead on environmental issues. I'm speaking today in support of funding a climate action and equity plan proposed in the budget. I'm sure you already know, and a lot of my colleagues have mentioned, that millions of Floridians are already experiencing the effects of climate change from higher temperatures to rising sea levels to more frequent and intense storms. And Tampa is particularly vulnerable to these climate impacts because of its topography, high density of residents and aging infrastructure. And we know that experts agree that the most important thing we can do to mitigate the worst impacts of climate change is to end our reliance on fossil fuels and transition instead to 100% clean renewable energy. This transition obviously looks different in every community, and it's vital that we create a roadmap that includes measures for a just and equitable transition. A climate action plan will allow us to figure out the best ways for Tampa specifically to achieve a cleaner and healthier future powered by renewable energy for every resident and guarantee that Black and Brown communities within Tampa are not left behind. This plan will draft the outline for how Tampa can lead on this issue, and we can take a closer look at opportunities to address energy efficiency, transition our power grid to renewable sources and convert our car-dependent community to clean electric, electric transportation. There is no time to waste, only a few inches of sea level rise will move the coastline further inland, threatening communities and intruding on fresh water resources. This past June, Tampa reached 99 degrees, which ties their all-time high temperature for any date. And we also obviously have been talking a lot about COVID-19. The pandemic has created many new challenges. Right now, we have the opportunity to learn from these struggles and make sure that our recovery efforts serve a healthy and safe economy for the long term. So on behalf of Environment Florida, I urge the Council to fund the climate action plan. Thank you so much for the time.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Next speaker we have is Aaron Vargas. If you can hear me, please unmute your line, you have.
Good morning. My name is Aaron Vargas. My wife and I live in Seminole Heights, and I felt compelled to make public comment this morning to stress the importance of affordable housing. Tampa has been like a beacon, like Mayor Castor said, Floridians from around the state, citizens from across the country are all relocating to our city. And I look forward to seeing Tampa continue to grow and to thrive. But as development and redevelopment continue to spread, we cannot turn a blind eye from the negative effects of gentrification. The One Tampa Land Trust and increased supply goals are all great initiatives. That said, we have to understand that gentrification is a subset of a housing crisis that requires specific localized targeted policies to prevent families from being displaced. Combating the negative effects of gentrification, it's not easy, especially when transformation and displacement is already happening. But the city has an incredible opportunity, and that's with Robles Park. As I'm sure many of you are familiar, this is a 433-unit property sitting on over 35 acres of land. The Housing Authority is in the process of creating a 10-year redevelopment plan for Robles. Due to its size and its location between Tampa Heights and Seminole Heights, this redevelopment project is going to be instrumental in setting the tone for how development will continue to spread through our city. I'm here this morning because I want to urge Mayor Castor and the city of Tampa to use your resources and influence to ensure the inclusion of anti-displacement measures as the Housing Authority makes plans for the redevelopment of Robles Park. Policies like the One Tampa Land Trust, it's a great start, but we also need funding sources for mitigating gentrification's negative effects, a funding source for stabilization vouchers, increasing and improving the owner-occupied rehab program, protections for seniors, neighborhood preferences. All of these are policies that can help families keep homes they have lived in for decades. I strongly recommend creating a redevelopment zone around Robles Park that includes affordable housing impact fees for new development. This will not only incentivize an increase of units for low and moderate income households, but it will also create a revenue stream that can help reach housing affordability and anti-displacement goals. Lastly, the city would be wise to invest in research partnerships specific to gentrification to analyze what policies across the, policies across the country have worked and which ones haven't. Research to gain a more precise understanding of property value changes during the redevelopment process. The goal is not to stop values from increasing, but to understand the extent at which values grow during redevelopment. A research-driven understanding of the problem will give us a much better chance at implementing efficient and effective policy. With a new fiscal year approaching and a community ready for change, now is the time to lean into affordable housing goals, both as policymakers and as citizens. As Tampa grows, let's make sure the most vulnerable citizens are not left behind. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Yes, next speaker we have is Christina Berg. If you can hear me, please unmute your line, you have three minutes.
Good morning. I appreciate the opportunity to speak at this meeting. I'd like to begin my comment by saying that this method of more accessible public comment via virtual call-in is an accommodation for citizens that I believe should move forward into a post-COVID standard operating procedure. I'm an educator and active citizen of this community. My children go to school here, and I would like to take this time to address agenda item number one, the City Council budget. Mayor Castor's presentation this morning almost immediately began with a steadfast commitment to not reallocating any of the budget for Tampa Police Department while simultaneously stating cuts to other aspects. The fact that this was her leading point in her presentation of the budget should tell us something. It's an important issue, it's an issue that many in the community are calling for resolution on. This is an unconscionable stance from the mayor. The community has demanded transparency, accountability and re-alotment of those funds. Why does every other agency of our community have to account for the unprecedented events of 2020, but the police department is somehow exempt from being flexible and helping to better the community? If public safety spending is something we hope we can do in our budget right now, but aren't prioritizing, that's an issue. We need to have better streetlights and sidewalk access in our most marginalized neighborhoods. The significant drop in crime statistics over the past few years is not solely contingent on our police department. We know that crime, as it's defined by local legal codes, decreases when we as a community are aggressively proactive about addressing the societal ills that lead to infractions. I'm concerned that Mayor Castor attributes the safety of our community to a million dispatch calls, but is our community really safe when our police chief on the media is arguably advocating for vigilante justice against peaceful protesters? And our chief of police lacks transparency about the deployment of less than lethal ammunition rounds that strike people in the back. Additionally, the police on the streets and our government buildings are routinely seen not following mask mandates or social distancing. A truly engaged police department should be motivated to see the community it operates in thrive. Right now, our community is not thriving. We face a chronic shortage of affordable housing and a seriously lackluster public transportation infrastructure. The city police department needs to be collaborative and flexible and can do so with a smaller budget if a safe and thriving community is what they ultimately want. We can creatively reimagine a de-escalation and police militarization. How many calls can we reduce by addressing basic needs of our most marginalized? Last year, City Council approved body camera funding, and as a community, we've seen little movement on this project. By reinvesting a part of the police department budget directly into our most marginalized neighborhoods, we can build an equitable city.
Thank you. Next speaker we have is Rachel Howell. If you can hear me, please unmute your line, you have three minutes.
Good morning, everyone, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak. Like she said, my name is Rachel Howell, and I've been a citizen of Tampa for nearly 20 years. Today, I want to comment on the proposed city budget. I appreciate the emphasis on public transportation, sustainability and green energy and empowering local neighborhoods. But today, I want to specifically comment on the portion of the budget allocated to public safety. I want to echo what my other fellow citizens have brought up this morning and urge City Council and Mayor Castor to seriously consider everything everyone has already brought up. I especially want to echo the sentiment of Rozelle Coffey saying that in these budget proposals, the demands of the citizens should be given priority. In Mayor Castor's budget presentation earlier today, she focused on the goal of uplifting Tampa Bay and transforming Tampa's tomorrow, and I hope not only my comments, but everyone's comments today are heard and understood with that same tone that we are all working to make a better Tampa Bay. I believe that a portion of the public safety budget should be allocated to non-police crisis intervention services. Now more than ever, both locally and nationwide, we're hearing for calls for a rethinking of the roles and responsibilities of police in our society, and I want to add my voice to that call. Mayor Castor said in a recent interview and even in her budget proposal this morning that we are asking too much of our police, and I agree with her. We are asking too much of our police. They shouldn't have to respond to non-criminal calls, and they should be reserved for only those calls where they are truly needed. Other cities have implemented similar systems, which other people have brought up today, but I want to reemphasize services such as the Kahoots Program in Eugene, Oregon, where they take on about 20% of their annual 911 calls and save their city an estimated $15 million each year. Also, right next door in St. Pete, I know other people have brought this up as well, but again, I want to reemphasize that they have announced their new community assistant liaison program, which will, which will respond to social services calls. Their own stated goal from their Assistant Chief of Police is to, one, decrease strain on police resources; two, reduce risk to member officers; and three, have better outcomes for our most vulnerable citizens. So as you can see, both citizens and police agree that these programs can benefit everyone involved. To bring back my original point of reimagining the roles and responsibilities of police in our society, we have to start thinking of these opportunities for change, like the Community Assistant Liaison Program or the Kahoots Program, as a way to benefit the entire community. So I urge the City Council and Mayor Jane Castor to consider using part of the public safety budget to implement similar to implement similar programs in Tampa for fiscal year 2021. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Next speaker we have is Brooke Bonset. If you could hear me, you have three minutes.
Hello there. Thank you, councilmen, for meeting with us today. I wanted to go over the comments of the other speakers a little bit. I agree with everything that's been said so far, specifically with the demands for the police budget. I want to second Joseph, his call for a study in the same vein as the macro or Kahoots programs that are taking place in Oakland and, I think, in Eugene. I also want to reiterate the four demands that we have. The freeze, the TBD budget, reduce the jail population by reducing unnecessary arrests, and this is especially important in a time of COVID. Halt targeting of Tampa activists and protesters. I've been one of them. I've been arrested. Never thought I would get arrested, but here I am. Fire Tampa Police Chief Brian Dugan. And I'm also sympathetic to the environmental and housing comments that have been made. I just want to bring attention to the fact that when we say paying officers less, it's not that we don't appreciate some of the work that they do or that it's because we want to give them poverty pay rates or something like that. We are already paying our officers as a city a lot more than other cities in Florida, up to, I think, about 5,000 more for the base salary for the standard officer and like maybe 20,000 more for lieutenants. So when we say, and also when we say that we want to defund the police, not that we're going to ask for anyone to be under the median level ever for salary, nor do we want to actually cut people's pay who have already been guaranteed that rate. It would only, they would be grandfathered in, and it would only be going forward. I would also like to express my disappointment in Mayor Jane's resistance to defunding the police. I think we've made it clear over and over again that these aren't crazy demands. 16 million more is what we're proposing, what has been proposed in this new budget is a lot of money, especially in a climate where other cities, which we could join, have not only frozen their budgets but decreased it by a lot. And I also, I have a scientific background. I don't bring this up a lot, but I have over a dozen papers that I've, I've peer-reviewed papers that I've authored. And so my dander goes up a little bit when I hear claims about how she has, or how Tampa has reduced their crime rate by 80% and that we have 50% less crime than other cities. That's great. I'm happy for that. But how do we know that has anything to do with our police department? Maybe I'm crazy, but I don't think that police, I mean, I'm sure there are cases where places have prevented crimes, but I think their main job is identifying crimes, right? So why does that have anything to do with saying that we need to then pay more for our police force when there's already less crime than other places? And if anything, that means that we should have less. Let me see.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker we have is Alicia Sastre. If you could hear me, please unmute your line. You have three minutes.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
All right, perfect. Good morning, councilman. Thank you for your service. Real quick, I just want to start off by thanking Councilman Gudes Miniscaulco, sorry for interrupting that, Carson Vieira Entingfelder. Just, you know, showing your support recently and the community is not gone unnoticed. You know, specifically Gudes for fighting back to bring back the community policing. Miniscaulco for your willingness to stay involved in our community, you know, going and witnessing the firsthand issues of the police brutality and equality for the Black and Brown community in Tampa. For Councilman Vieira, I was there on June 23rd. It was definitely a pleasant surprise to see you show up when we had that, you know, massive public comment. It, you know, really made us feel heard, or at least it made myself feel heard. And Ding Felder, I really appreciate your comments at the last workshop. Again, it does not go unnoticed or underappreciated. Next, what I want to say is pretty much just kind of echoing what my fellow peers have said. I am born and raised in Tampa. I was born in University Community Hospital. I don't know if that happened. How Tampa and Fletcher, born and raised, I am proud to be, you know, a part of this community. The only thing I regret is that I'm only recently become, you know, active in these meetings and becoming aware. One thing that I really just wanted to push again, it's probably already been said, is that, you know, Jane, it's very telling that one of the first things that the mayor states is that she is not willing to defund the police. And a lot of what we are bringing up, you know, as options just to try out, just as a study, you know, to conduct on our community, you know, for public safety, it takes up 62% of our general fund. And specifically, the police department takes a bulk of that fund within it. There were some people saying here that one of the things we could do would be to freeze, you know, hiring at TPD. We already have 30% more officers per citizen compared to similar cities in their populace. You know, put that cap at 900 officers, conduct a 5% pay cut to the minimum maximum payroll. 100 less officers, again, this is probably already said, would save 7.5 to 10 million in salary alone. That's not including the pensions. Those changes alone, just between that, is only about $14 million, which is about 5% of the general fund, the 62% of the general fund. We're not asking for radical change. We're just asking for you to give us a shot, to give our city a shot at seeing what change could do. Our community, you know, we pride ourselves in saying that we have public safety in mind. One of the things, though, you know, it doesn't make sense to pay cops more. Our cops are already being paid more than the average. It doesn't make sense to increase their budget. I just wanted to pull something up real quick. So right now, the median pay for a police officer is $50,000, just so give or take. Right now, we're paying $55,000, a little bit over that. For a sergeant, $75,000, a little bit over that. We are currently paying $89,000, a little over that. For lieutenant, $87,380 is the median. We are paying $110,968. There's no reason for us to increase the pay. We should be allocating these funds elsewhere. As other people have said, mental health services. Looking across at St. Pete, they are already enacting, you know, their version of trying to solve. I don't see why we should wait to see how it goes for them. We should have been leading this and doing this ourselves and paving the way.
Thank you very much. All right, next speaker.
All right, next speaker we have is Zulema Ramos. If you could hear me, please unmute yourself.
Good morning, council members. My name is Zulema. I'm with the Tampa Bay Housing Justice Committee, representing over 150 community members. Thank you all for being here. And just to begin, Jane Castor herself, if you know her history, is not a credible source of information. She has a well-documented history of counting multiple crimes as one to falsify crime rates, told her officers to downgrade crimes to boost statistics, was in charge of the notorious biking wall block program, and was directly responsible for the in-home execution of community members like Jason Westcott and the murder of Arthur Green Jr. In addition, according to internal TPD reports, use of force under Police Chief Brian Dugan has increased 24%, and pepper spray use is up by 223% among illegal actions and violations documented by legal observers in orgs like ACLU. So you all, as a city council, really need to ask Mayor Castor to fire him. This is unacceptable. You're hurting children and medics and community members who are peaceful. We also ask that the city reallocate and freeze 100% of police funding and replace them with counselors from places like the Crisis Center of Tampa Bay. Me, myself, have had a serious situation in which a friend was trying to commit suicide, and he was I assisted by the Crisis Center of Tampa Bay. TPD came and 10 officers surrounded him without a mask with their hands on weapons. That is not community safety. That is not public safety. Most TPD officers can't even follow basic public health guidelines, like wearing a mask, even though it's a county-wide mandate. Right now, more city residents are at risk of houselessness and hunger than any time ever in my lifetime because of our national systems and this pandemic. And if we don't change our ways as a city, it will get even worse after. And people cannot vote for you if they are displaced or dead. And even before the pandemic hit, at least 19% of city residents were already living at or below the poverty line. It's time to invest in free and affordable housing, complete streets, mental and physical healthcare, public transit that accesses every part of the city, marginalized-owned business development, the 100% clean energy we need right now if we're going to survive as a city. And just to point out a last thing from a great New York Times article by Mariam E. Kaba. The first thing to point out is police officers don't do what they think you do. They spend most of their time responding to noise complaints, parking and traffic citations, and other non-criminal issues. They're not catching bad guys or bank robbers or serial killers. And the vast majority of police officers make one felony arrest a year. And so what's really important to note is that as a society, we have been so indoctrinated with the idea that we have to solve problems by policing and caging people, that many cannot imagine how beautiful and wonderful the world could be without prisons, without police, with alternative to solutions that cause violence and harms. Imagine what the world would look like if we had the money we really needed for houseless people to not be under bridges but to be inside, for people to have food and to not have to steal, for everyone to have the education they need to get the job they deserve, for everyone to have access to the public transit they need to get to that job, and for them to be able to get to that job once they finally get it safely without being sexually or physically assaulted by a police officer. According to a 2009 study, which is over a decade ago, which means we have lots and lots of evidence, every five days, an officer in the United States is reprimanded for sexual assault. Like if we're going to talk about basic things like keeping women safe, keeping children safe, we need to do better than sending police to their homes and sending police with guns and tasers and pepper spray and bear mace to places where people need understanding and professionalism.
Thank you very much.
All right, Chair.
Did you include the live call-in?
Yes, I do want to announce that we had four public comment requests, but they did not log onto the webinar, and I will announce their names. Graham, Sheila, Pryor, White, Kent Bailey, and Your Highness Tofari. And now, on to the recorded public comments.
Before you begin, clerk, council members, once we finish the recorded public comments, would you like to take a 10- or 15-minute break? Being that this is virtual and this is new, we can't do a lunch break. But if we do this, remember that you do not log out of the go-to meeting. You just put your camera on pause and mute your microphone. But if that's all right with council members, unless there's any objection. All right, hearing none. So we'll take a break after the recorded public comment. Let's say 15 minutes. Remember, do not log out of the meeting, and then we'll continue the meeting. Clerk, go ahead with the recorded comments. And how many do we have? Was it 11 people?
Yes, approximately 10 or 11.
Okay, go ahead. Thank you.
And just to make note, I will be playing one after the next, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Anders Carey, and I live at 2312 North Morton Street, Apartment C. I'm calling to express my issues with the loaded public safety budget, which accounts for 62% of the general fund expenditures, namely things like mental health, transportation in the city of Tampa, healthcare, community gardens, and the public parks, et cetera, are underfunded. And we have absolutely no transportation for other cities like Boston Orange Graduate College, which has a public transportation service in the former buses, subways, that are, we're allocating no money to improve the parks. In fact, that budget was just cut and service was cut back, and we are not moving forward.
The audio cut out for that.
Make Tampa a better community instead of simply overpleading them. Thank you.
Hi there. My name is Brianna Holmes, and I am editor of the 1018 East End Street, Tampa, Florida 23603. I am calling to leave my public comment to express my fears and concerns over the fact that over the past couple months, with all the pressure going on in this country, along with this city, we are continuing to not take a hard look at the budgets that are spent in this city and think hard about where the taxpayer money in this city goes and funding more programs that help underprivileged communities, help them rise up in this city as opposed to funneling money towards police dollars and keeping those citizens feeling like they're in a police state. This is not right. This is not just. This is not the way we as Tampa residents should look toward our future planning of this city. And looking toward the future, when we're looking at Water Street Tampa, how we want this city to become a national and international destination for businesses, tech leadership, arts, everything. The way that we're reading in terms of how we structure our city and where the taxpayer money goes does not equate to how we will become a leader in that area. I please ask you all to take a hard look and think about, where do we want this city to be in 10 years, 20 years, 30 years? And ask, does our budget currently reflect that? Does funneling as much money as we have into the police budget, instead of the arts, instead of housing, instead of public education, does that truly help this city? Thank you so much for your time. I look forward to seeing how today's agenda unfolds and how we build for the future of this city.
Hi, my name is Diana Shanks. I'm a resident of the city of Tampa. I live in Bayshore. And I'm calling to express a few concerns about the budget. I would like to see a freeze in TPD's budget and reallocation of at least 19% of their budget to community safety programs. I believe we should reduce the jail population by reducing unnecessary arrests. There needs to be an end to anti-protest police violence and activist targeting. That needs to start with the firing of Police Chief Brian Dugan. I think it's really important, as we go into this budget, to prioritize affordable housing, mental health care, childcare, investment in Black businesses, public transportation, and these kind of support services that make our community safer. Thank you so much. Have a good day.
Hi, my name is Emily Baker. I live in Town and Country. I hope everyone is doing okay. I wanted to make a comment about the first agenda item. So I believe that any indecision and protection of the police budget is directly related to unequal treatment of protest groups. This includes your allowance of the targeting of racial justice activists, your use of chemical warfare, rubber bullets, and your action regarding potentially premeditated vehicular assault. Then you cheer when individuals, some haunting symbols of white supremacy, shut down a street downtown to paint a hideous mural without a permit. The mayor, the state attorney, the city council, you are all complicit, perhaps some more than others. It's not professional and wreaks of harboring white supremacists, glossing it over as chauvinism. I am aware of police departments across central Florida who have treated white supremacist groups in a more respectful manner than local racial or environmental justice groups, but you're often made up of Black and Indigenous folk or people of color trying to make your city better. What gives? Tampa clearly needs a chief diversity officer because your social media managers might cutting it. I think the cops can stand to lose their stockpile of militarized equipment. Your silence is deafening. I believe any action taken that is not directed towards this course of action is a direct act against the people and shows a blatant disregard to the progress of human rights. Strong communities are the most effective tools to protect and grow individuals and families. Strong communities are the most effective tools to protect and grow individuals and families to be their best selves, even in the face of trauma. We serve trauma and call it justice. You are complicit. If we are America and we are great, then let's start acting as people of substance, communities of substance. Let the people who fear this change know you will continue to protect them, offer reassurances, but be explicit that it's time to take the next steps to implement true accountability and the current state of justice. I hope you are all asking yourselves, where is the evidence the exponential difference in police budget is actually making our communities any better? Where are the results empowering our communities? And while I may have missed it, looking through your budget agenda items, I didn't see any money allocated to the grave sites leaders in Tampa have been developing over for half a century. Refund your community.
Hi, my name is Emily Widenberger, and I'm an employee of USS. I ask you to please divert funds from the Tampa Police Department budget and allocate them to use in more proactive ways to improve the community. Police officers can respond only to symptoms of problems in the community. They cannot treat the problem, so we need to stop asking and expecting them to. Invest, please, in childcare programs, adult education, preschool, housing, just to name a few of the ways that this money could better help the community. I'm also deeply troubled by the actions of the police department and Chief of Police Dugan. The department has been infringing on the First Amendment rights of Tampa residents with violence and negligence. Chief Dugan should be removed immediately, and the department needs to stop targeting protesters for standing up for their rights.
Hello, my name is Zonation. I live in Pasco County. And I work in Tampa, in Hillsborough County. I have seen online all the pictures of the Back to Blue writing, painting, that was not authorized by the city of Tampa to be in our downtown district. This is where I work. This is not a message that I support. This is not a message that a lot of citizens in Tampa right now support, obviously. This was not commissioned. It needs to be taken down before it entices violence in the city. What we are trying to avoid right now, this is pure enticement, and it needs to be. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kelsey Trussler. I live in Seminole Heights in Tampa, and I'm calling about Agenda Item Number One. I'm voicing my support for freezing the Tampa TV budget and reallocating at least 19% of it to community programs that ultimately help prevent and reduce crime, which punitive policing doesn't do. In addition, it's very important that we reduce unnecessary arrests to reduce the jail population for the prisoners who got it protected from COVID-19. Prisoners are people and deserve help and safety. I also demand that Tampa Police Force immediately halt aggressive tactics against protesters. When responding to protests of police brutality with unnecessary police violence, you are further proving the need for the protest in the first place. It's only so that it escalates the conflict if there's nothing to solve the reduced police violence. Lastly, I believe that Chief Dugan has consistently failed at his duties of negligence and lack of transparency, and I ask that he be removed and replaced with a more capable police chief. Thank you. Bye.
My name is Lauren Ivey-Janson. I live at 807 West River Heights Avenue, Seminole Heights. I'm calling in order to support the reallocation of funds from the Tampa Police Department. I think that we're at a point right now where we've seen that what we need are more community measures and less policing and punitive measures. And I think the city of Tampa needs to show that it's capable of leading that way in the future. I'd like to see if we can get a freeze on hiring and get 20% of the Tampa Police Department budget to go into community programs, something about mental health, attainable housing, healthcare, poverty alleviation, transit for the city, things that actually help people and prevent crime moving forward. I'd also encourage you to look at finding further ways to reduce our jail population as we continue to go through COVID-19 and all the attendant problems that come with it, packing people into unsanitary or less than sanitary, at least. Jail cell is not a good solution for this area. So unnecessary arrests and letting people out are a lot. I think would be a great way for us to move forward. In the meantime, I think it's really important that those who are standing up and who are speaking for this and who are protesting to address these need to stop being targeted for violence and for that. We've seen the Tampa Police Department allow illegal activity that they like, literally on their doorstep. They need to understand that legal activity that they don't like is more protective, not less. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Verlin Stanley. I am a resident of Tampa Bay. I am calling specifically about Agenda Item One, which is the funding for the Tampa Police Department. I've become increasingly concerned with the actions of TPD, and I think that there needs to be a serious change in the funding and the way that the police department functions. Specifically, I think that the Tampa Bay Police Department's budget needs to be frozen, and 19% needs to be reallocated towards community health and safety programs. We need to fight to reduce the jail population during the pandemic by reducing unnecessary arrests for things like nonviolent offenses, like drug offenses, vandalism, loitering. You know, these are just situations where the police, who are not wearing masks, I've never seen a Tampa Police Department officer wear a mask while on the job, are handling people, putting them in unsafe conditions, and exposing them to COVID-19. In addition to that, I also think that Tampa Police Department absolutely must stop targeting protesters and silence, and stop targeting activists. There have been multiple cases where people who were cited at protests have been followed by the Tampa Police Department, and they're taking no responsibility for this. They've allowed cars to run into protesters and hand them, and have even arrested protesters, and let the person driving the car who drove into a crowd of pedestrians go. It is absolutely unacceptable behavior. They need to stop immediately, and Chief Dugan needs to step down immediately because he obviously is not competent. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Sophia. I live in Silver Springs. If next year's budget looks anything like the 2020 budget, I'm calling to ask you to defund the police. I think this can be achieved by reexamining the salary of most positions in TPD and decreasing rent salaries by 5% and by placing a hiring freeze or a 900 officer cap on the police department. Our last year's budget, officers started at $55,000, but many made much more than that, with most officers making $89,000, and most leadership positions, lieutenants, sergeants, majors, corporals, chiefs, making well above six figures. Why does a police officer's salary need to be $48,000 above Tampa's median income? All positions with pay scales above the median income level of $51,000 should be decreased by 5%, with current officers being grandfathered in at their current pay. Tampa boasts that it has 1,000 officers, but what if we only had 900? It may be preliminary to suggest a hiring freeze or officer cap, so we need to head in that direction. We can start by launching a study into social programs that complement police departments across the country. One example is Oregon's Caboose Program, where about 20% of emergency calls can be answered by a social worker and a medic rather than an armed officer. Of 24,000 calls tracked, only 150 requested additional officer backup. This program also saved the city that served $15 million. It is time for the city of Tampa to start looking to other cities for example, because what we're doing here is not working for the 70,000 citizens living in poverty. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Philip Registered Baker. I live at 12352 Wither Ridge Drive, Tampa, Florida, 33624. I am calling in regard calling regarding item number one for the agenda for the August 6th meeting. I ask for you to reallocate foods for Tampa police by instating a hiring freeze and for 19% of the Tampa Police Department budget to go back into the community into areas like after-school programs, healthcare, public schools, mental health, and substance use treatment, and cheap, realistic, alternative transportation options. With a smarter, stronger, and connected community comes a safer one with less need for such violent punishments. I also ask for the removal of Police Chief Dugan for his abuse of power by the way of force, especially in communities of color. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Chair. That will conclude the public comment portion of the agenda.
All right, thank you very much for organizing all that. I appreciate it. We all appreciate your hard work. So council members, it's 11:55. If we can take a break until 12:15 sharp, please do not leave the meeting. Just pause your camera, your webcam, and mute your microphone. So we'll stay within the meeting. We don't have to re-log in and everything. We stay on track. From there, we will continue with the agenda. So 12:15, we will reconvene. Therefore, we are in recess until then. Again, please do not leave the meeting.